This is WFPRLP Franklin on 102.9 FM.
There you go. There you go, Tom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, guys. We're gonna take just a one-minute break here so the kids can take a picture. Take a picture up here. Kids, just stand right where you were.
Yep, good job, girls.
Of course I need you, yes.
For the moment, it's probably too late. Awesome. Especially at 10 o'clock.
Aw, thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Always nice. A little happiness.
That's brilliant. And Linda, too, I see.
I used to be a frowny leader. I took yours about.
You started it.
Well, you know, in 1912.
Melanie.
That was in trouble.
We have all shot people tonight. We can leave it down.
Oh, like the little girls, yeah, they, uh...
No, 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 the mic, I really need that.
He knows the roll call.
Oh, brother.
Is Kobe out there?
Yep.
There are people waiting, too.
Cool. Yeah, they do a name and address. Kobe, Kobe just jumped on, huh?
Yeah, okay. Okay, I called the February 28th meeting of the Franklin Town Council back to order. Next item on the agenda is announcements from the chair. All citizens are now welcome to attend public board and committee meetings in person. Meetings are livestreamed by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29. In an effort to maximize citizen engagement opportunities, citizens will be able to continue to participate remotely via phone or you may click the Zoom link that is on the posted agenda and on the town's website. The phone number is 929-205-6099. And enter the meeting ID, which is 891-2383-9497. And then you need to hit the pound sign. Once again, the meeting ID is 891-2383-9497, pound. If residents are just interested in watching the meeting, it will also be livestreamed by Franklin TV. I have received a couple of calls regarding the phone number and the meeting ID not being up often enough. I've spoken to our cable people and they will bring that phone number and the meeting ID up more often than we have been. Okay, upcoming events. Veterans Coffee Hour at the Franklin Senior Center, March 6th at 10:00 a.m. Joined for the discussion with State Rep. Jeff Roy, Secretary of Veteran Services, John Santiago, and State Senator Becca Roush on veterans and the efforts being made to support them. And just a reminder, and I know there'll be another one coming up shortly, but early voting for the presidential primary starts on February 29th at Franklin High School. And just a reminder to those interested that the Joint Budget Subcommittee will be meeting next Wednesday here in council chambers. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda.
You need to identify the council...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Counselor Frangillo is participating remotely this evening. He's traveling on business, so he is logged into Zoom. Okay, citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizens' comments. The town council will give remarks, appropriate consideration, and may ask the town administrator to review the matter. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? I knew the town clerk was ready to...
Thank you. I'm gonna switch it up tonight.
Don't confuse us.
Mr. Mercer and the rest of the members of the council, thank you so much. And just a little correction. We already started early voting, Mr. Mercer. We started this past Monday. So Friday is the last day for early voting. And we're in the home stretch. We have, what, five, six more days until the election, March 5th. We'll be at the Franklin High School Tuesday, March 5th, from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Be there. I want to see you all there. In-person early voting did start Monday up at the high school. It's been a little bit slow, but we've been busy here at the town hall. We've received 3,000 ballots in already, mailed out about 5,000, and they still continue to come in. So not, not so bad, right? So pretty good. If you haven't registered to vote for this election, it's too late. But still, but still come in to vote, to register. And we'll get you registered after the election on March 5th for the following election in September. The last day to request a vote by mail ballot was yesterday. So if you've submitted one yesterday, I'm sorry, but you're gonna have to come in and either vote early in person, either here or at the high school. We'll be at the high school tomorrow from 9:00 to 3:00. And then Friday from 9:00 to 12:00. And here at the town hall in the clerk's office tomorrow from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And then on Friday from 8:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. And then you can also come in and vote absentee. Now, you will need an excuse to vote absentee on Monday until noon time. And that's all I have. I thank you very much and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, is there anyone else in council chambers? Please come forward. Name and address, please.
Jane Callaway Tripp, 607 Maple Street. I am here to speak about the recent issues with the DPW director. I am voicing my concerns regarding his possible reinstatement. As a town, we have to hold people, not only elected seats, but also paid employees accountable for their actions. It is called accountability. The DPW director new and willingly violated ethics that he was sworn to uphold. This makes him untrustworthy, in my opinion, and I know I'm not the only one that feels that way. And I know, oh, sorry. Also, it leaves me wondering what other unethical things may he have done. Why do we send our town employees to ethics classes every year? What is the point of wasting time and money if they choose to violate it and then they are not held accountable and allowed to keep their jobs? It is actually unfair and a slap in the face to all the town employees who choose to follow the ethics that they are meant to uphold. I feel he should not be reinstated as director or honestly at all. He lost credibility based on his ethical violations. His salary is over $165,000 a year. That is 200% higher than the average town employee. He clearly could have paid for those trips on his own. But yet he chose to accept them and violate the ethics, knowing his job could be on the line. I also feel that an independent audit should be done at the DPW in everything he was involved in, from the jobs that he was on to the purchases and inventory. Again, my opinion. If he knowingly violated the ethics of the town, the ethics the town put in place, then how do we know there are not other violations that simply have not come to light yet? Yes, he received a $15,000 fine from state ethics board, but now it is time for the town to hold him accountable. And a temporary unpaid leave is not being held accountable. The town administrator is responsible for the town employees and the council is responsible for the town administrator. If the town administrator chooses to bring him back, then I ask the council to hold the town administrator accountable and take action. Accountability has disappeared in this town, and without it, what is the point? If there is not, if we are not going to be holding people accountable then spending the taxpayers' money to send them to ethics classes is a simple waste of time and money. We have allowed council members to violate rules to which they were sworn to uphold, yet they sit in their seats and nothing was ever done. We have town employees that have made huge mistakes, cost the taxpayers over a half a million dollars, and still has a position they were sitting in. Now we have this with the DPW director. This is just another incident that the people in charge can either say enough and do the right thing and bring back accountability or sweep it under the rug like they have before and just forget about the ethics and the right thing altogether. Send the message that you care about the town and the taxpayers by holding a people accountable and upholding the ethics for the position that you are sitting in. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone out in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? I don't see anybody, but... That font's awful small from here. Do you see anybody? Okay, moving along. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, additions, deletions? Seeing none, it'll be a roll call vote. Clerk will call the roll.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Carmichael Ledger?
Yes.
Frangillo?
Yeah.
Chandler?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Jones, yes, vice chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Nine zeros.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Proclamations and recognitions. We have none scheduled, no appointments. We do have a public hearing. And I would declare a public hearing on zoning bylaw amendment 24-901, formerly 23-901. Zoning map changes from single-family residential 3 to business in area on or near King Street. A zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at Chapter 185, Section 5, zoning map. I declare that public hearing open. Janey?
Sure. So through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna give a short overview of what's led to tonight and some of the actions that have led up to the public hearing. And then both Brian Tabner, our community development director, and our building commissioner, Gus Brown, will be available to answer any questions that folks have. So before the council tonight is a public hearing on a zoning map change. It is just the two parcels that are right up here on the pointer, right on King Street. The parcel to the left is the assisted living complex. The parcel in the back here, thank you, Steve. The parcel in the back here is EMC Dell. And the parcel to the right is the Station 2 Fire Department headquarters over here, right before you go up Upper Union Street to the right. Right over off this map is Interstate 495, the on-ramps, exit ramps that merges over throughout King Street. Really quickly, before we go to Brian, to explain in a little bit more detail what the business district is. The individuals and owners of, who had acquired these two parcels here had approached the town over last summer about a possible rezone and identified these parcels as being residentially zoned that are surrounded by essentially a fire department, an industrial park, and the assisted living complex. Folks may recognize this big swath up here. That is not a part of tonight's discussion or zoning change. That zone is already zoned, business zoning across the street. There was a project approved, I think it was last year, for a warehouse back there. I do want to note that as part of that mitigation of that project, the area on King Street, which I know many of you are familiar with, where traffic backs up in front of the fire department, there was mitigation that was put in place by the planning board to fix that intersection outside the fire department. That building has not been built yet. I don't know if it'll be built soon. It could be years away. It could be two years from now. They have the permits. But as part of that decision, in the traffic study that went on, that intersection has mitigation money to fix where the fire trucks come out in that area crosswalk there that's all painted as part of that proposal. So in August of last summer, maybe about a couple months after the owners of the property, who are also here tonight and will be speaking to the zone, had approached us at a staff level. The staff believed that it was a good idea to not be zoned residential. We went through the myriad of other commercial-industrial zoning districts that were options and for several reasons, but all that Brian will speak to in a minute. Most notably, that business is right here already. It's already zoned across the street business that we thought that the zoning proposal, you know, had merit and we would take it through the process to see what the community thought. The EDC, the Economic Development Subcommittee, did have a meeting on this last August. I will say that it was while it was passed unanimously for them. I believe generally the spirit from the EDC was, okay, this is a decent idea. We hear the problems with the tax levy in town. This is an opportunity maybe for some additional commercial development, some additional tax base. And I think most of the members that night, if not everybody, at least said, okay, let's take it through the process. Let's see what the community thinks, the planning board, et cetera. And they moved it on to the town council. As part of our town bylaws, which most people may not be familiar with, but many may be familiar with, the zoning bylaw process then comes to the full town council, which it did last September. And traditionally, the council, this council, as well as many councils before, traditionally say, okay, we're gonna refer that legislation to the planning board, who deals with zoning, who deals with development, and we're gonna get their take on things. This council, I've been here almost nine, in my ninth year. I think you've always referred everything unanimously, pretty much, pretty closely to unanimous. Everything goes to the planning board for a hearing. The planning board did hold numerous hearings on the matter. And people have asked me a ton of times this week, so I'm just gonna get it out of the way now. Why did the planning board vote 1 to 2 to not recommend this zoning to the town council? They started the hearing process before the election. And then when the election happened, two of those members did not run for reelection. Two additional members came on the planning board. I won't go into any details, but if people ask, Mark, we can ask it later. There's a certain procedure in state law that if you've missed the first bit of a public hearing on something like this, you have to essentially recuse yourself or go through a process in which you have to declare that you can do it. So the two newest members of the planning board were not, did not have that hearing. The two former members of the planning board didn't run, did not also vote on this. So the vote was a 1 to 2 not to recommend the current business zoning that is proposed. It doesn't mean zoning can't be amended or changed or tweaked. It's just the recommendation was on that actual business zone on the proposal that the EDC and the council forwarded to them. They sent us and finalized their process at the end of November, just before Thanksgiving. And they sent a letter up to the town council, who had also just had their election and then needed a couple months to get settled with their committee structure and the process here and then also go through their goals for the year. So we apologize to some that this has taken a couple months to get moving forward on the agenda. Also, as required by state law, I want to be clear with everyone. The process is not to send out a butter notification that is not required by law. What is required is to do a legal ad in the newspaper. We also, just so folks know, this council, as well as the administration, have filed legislation to remove that legal advertisement so that we can actually post all of our legal advertisements online. Why? Because we already do publish an email subscription list on our legal advertisements. We've done this for a bunch of years where if anybody out there doesn't read the newspaper, and I'm speaking for just a few. I don't think a lot of people do. It just makes sure that the folks that do read a newspaper are able to see the legal ad. And also, we have everything online from a legal ad. We're not required to do that, but the town goes above and beyond to do that. We have a subscription list, and I know that word has gotten out anyway. So tonight is the first reading of this legislation. It is required to be approved by a majority vote by the council on reading one. And then there's a second reading that's required in order to pass a zoning bylaw amendment. I just wanted to take a few minutes. I'm very grateful, Mr. Chairman, just to let sure everybody knows kind of the way, the lay of the land is and what's going on in terms of the process. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I'll then turn it over to Mr. Tabner just to go through a brief overview of what the business zone is. Thank you.
Brian?
Thank you, Chairman. The business zone is one of the less impactful commercial-industrial zones that we have. It does not allow a residential use in that zone. Some of the commercial zones, like Commercial 1 and Commercial 2, do allow residential. But this does not. Actually, Commercial 2 does not. But there are people who've gotten ZBA variances on that issue. But the uses that are allowed by right, I can just run down really quickly on the two parcels which are being proposed for rezone are nursery, greenhouse, garden center, restaurant, retail sales uses and services, office uses, including banks, credit unions, medical, dental, other professional administrative uses, a business incubator, co-working space, artisanal and craft maker space, and art gallery type of uses. By planning board special permit, motor vehicle, boat farm, and implement sales, not including repair services, are allowed. Filling or service station, vehicular service establishments, which are mostly drive-through type of establishments. Function hall, catering, hotel or motel, brewery, distillery, or winery, brining, reproduction, with a tasting room, can also be built. And ZBA special permit. In addition, would allow animal hospital, kennel, daycare, training, and things of that nature. So in general, it is a standard business use district. No industrial uses are allowed. When the proposal for rezoning in that area came up, if it's not gonna be residential, the business seemed to be the only logical thing to rezone it to. And that's the reason we went with the business district proposal. And again, I'm happy to talk on any issue that you like, answer any questions. But that is generally the rundown on the uses that are allowed by right or special permit.
Thank you, Brian. The petitioner, if you'd like to come forward. Then I will go to the public. Where it is a public hearing, the public will speak before the council.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Richard Cornetta. Thank you for entertaining us this evening. I've been asked to speak on behalf of the ownership of the subject parcel to speak in favor of the proposed zoning proposal. I'd like to also thank Jamie and his staff for the explanation this evening. Sometimes this process can be somewhat confusing. But it was several months ago that we did sit with Jamie and his staff to point out what we believe to be an irregular zoning situation that has happened here with this property. Before I go any further, I'd like to introduce Joe Evans. Joe is one of the principal owners of East Coast, which has purchased, I believe it is 634...
American East Coast.
Oh, I'm sorry. American East Coast, Joe. 634 King Street, which is the property, one of the properties that is the subject. The other property is 648 King Street, which is the single-family residence, which is the Nissouli family home. Joe's property was formerly owned by Cumberland Farms. It's been owned by Cumberland Farms for at least 25 years. And it has sat idle and undeveloped for those years. And I think in large part due to the zoning classification, it being a residential zone. I know they had attempted to come for, I believe, the Zoning Board of Appeals a couple of times over those years, trying to get some relief, to try to do some development there. And I think finally, they just, they walked away from the property and Joe and his group purchased the property. I do want to talk a little bit about the zoning purgatory that has happened to this property. As you can see from the coloring of the maps, what's happened over time is that this property has been sandwiched between these commercial uses. The, to the east, the Station 2, the firehouse. To the, to the west, the Encore 81-unit residential senior living facility. And then to the rear, the Dell property, which is a large office building. And given its close proximity to the interstate, the on and off ramps, it is a property that has a lot of potential. And I commend Jamie and his staff for seeing that when we brought this to their attention last year. In support of the zoning change, obviously, some of the low-lying fruits would be that, you know, obviously, there is an interest for the town to turn this property into... you know, obviously, there is an interest for the town to turn this property into a more income-producing property. It is a property where it's located that to be go, to go undeveloped is really, is not the optimal use for this property. I think we can all agree. And given its proximity to the on and off ramps of the interstate, it becomes a property that, that has great potential to not only generate tax revenue for the town, but it also could create some additional jobs. And quite frankly, in looking at the traffic situation there, we probably will hear a lot of comments about traffic, but if you're familiar with this area, if you pass underneath the overpass, underneath and you head into the, toward the Silver Maples Common Commercial Area, I think you pass three or four sets of lights, if you're passing from the west to the east. And should this property and should this proposal go forward, and some type of commercial development take place here, I think, quite ironically, what you may have is you may be alleviating some of the traffic congestion that takes place in and around those lights regarding the Silver Maple Commons and some of the commercial areas there. Because people from the west are traveling on King Street, and they're having to, even if to go get a tank of gas or a quart of milk, they need to pass through six or seven signal lights just to get these items of convenience, and then return back through those lights to go back home. And so oddly enough, where you look at a use like this, you could introduce a commercial use, a convenience, a convenience use, that would serve the community quite well from a traffic alleviation standpoint, eliminating unnecessary trips into this already heavily congested area. During the process that Jamie spoke of in going before the planning board, we did not participate in that meeting, and shame on us, we probably should have, but we felt that this was the town's proposal at that time, and we were going to let the process take its course. And I watched it, and during that, there was some discussion with the neighbors and commenting in the planning board, and, and some of the comments that were made, they started to discuss alternate choices, as Brian had indicated, you know, the other commercial options. And one of the options that seemed to resonate with the planning board was the neighborhood commercial use. And a little background on that is that neighborhood commercial was a zoning district that arrived somewhere around 2003. And I remember, because I was involved with one of the projects on the other side of the highway, and it was very contentious, we're talking about creating a commercial area in and around the Spruce Pond Village. And this zone was created as a, as a means to maybe try to placate some of the concerns that bringing commercial to and around residential areas. The problem, though, with this neighborhood commercial is, and by the way, it's been on the books for about 20 years, and it does not appear on our zoning map. It's never, this council or our predecessor councils have never identified an area within the town to place neighborhood commercial on the map. And I believe the reason, some of the primary reasons for that is that if you look at the, at the legislation in the code, it's very restrictive, not just from a use standpoint, but I think more so from a dimensional standpoint. And I speak about, in looking at the coverage requirements or the limitations, I believe the, the impervious limitation for that zone is 35%. So what that means is, is that two-thirds of any site has to remain undeveloped. And from a commercial standpoint, that's, that's damaging, very damaging, as you can imagine, where two-thirds of your site, you can't really use for structures or pavement, they have to remain pervious. And so I think, from that perspective alone, neighborhood commercial is not the option, although it may seem, the name sounds great, neighborhood commercial, it seems like a politically expedient way to make everybody happy. But I just want to point out to the council that it really is not the answer here, and certainly, where it doesn't exist on the map today, to place it just in this one spot would seem a bit illogical. So we feel, as, as, as the administration feels, that the Business One District is the most logical choice for this particular property. Because where it's sandwiched, and I think even the parties that may oppose this type of a rezone, they have to acknowledge that even though the Nissuti property is built, it's, it's not an optimal location between the fire station, between a senior living center, and in front of a, in front of a large office building. And by the way, behind that is the Forge Park. It's an industrial zone, it's a developed industrial zone. So, so this property is really in a zoning purgatory, where it's, it's stuck, and, and we're looking to, to the council and to the town to maybe provide some relief in this zoning decision. And I should mention in conclusion that zoning is one of the most important of many that the council wields and decides upon, because it dictates how the town is shaped. Look no further than the industrial parks. Without the decisions of this council and its predecessor councils, we wouldn't have the industrial base that we have today. And, and I think it's, you know, Franklin is, is, you know, there's a lot of communities that are envious of Franklin because of that. But zoning is a broad brush. It just provides an opportunity. It provides you to say, yes, this is an area that we would like to see maybe any one of these myriad of commercial uses in this particular case. By the way, there is no specific proposal. I know there's been a lot of misunderstanding. There is no specific proposal for any specific site to be developed here. This is just the starting point. And that, that brings me to my point about zoning. It's, should you allow this to proceed and approve this, it would then allow the owners of this property to specifically identify and possibly come forward with a specific development that would then go before the normal approval process, which is through the various committees, the technical review committee, the economic development committee, and in many cases, they will be going before the planning board for either site plan approval or, in most cases, a special permit. And so, as you know, there's a lot of dedicated people that serve on these boards, and they do, and they dedicate a lot of their time, and a lot of the issues that you may hear later on tonight about concerns about light and, and noise and traffic, these are all things, although they're discussion points during a zoning hearing, they're really meant for specific proposals where you can specifically identify these issues that these types of developments present. And the town already has a, a well, well thought out and, and productive process to, to really vet these projects and, and address these with mitigation measures. And in some cases, they say, no, it's just not appropriate, through the special permit process. So by saying yes tonight, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're saying yes to this project or a big development that is going to be onerous to the neighborhood. No, it just means that you're going to allow this property to step away from its purgatory of being one in which it just doesn't fit where it is. And the Business One that is across the street, as you look at the blue up there, it looks like it would be very logical to just extend it down to these, to these parcels. So with that, I would thank the, thank the council for their opportunity to speak on this, and certainly, we're here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cornetta. Okay, this is a public hearing, therefore, the public gets the first bite of the apple, so to speak. So is there anyone in council chambers that has a question or a comment on this bylaw Please just come forward, state your name and address, please.
Karen Miller, Washington Street. You hate to be the first to speak, right? So perception is everything, right? And, and, you know, it's great to hear comments like, it would have to go in front of the planning board and such. And I remember the first time I came to you guys many years ago, because of all the zoning that's gone on in that neighborhood, I live in the neighborhood area there, and I heard that, and I believed in it. And I believed when the council zoned the big property in blue, there are parts of it that were in our backyard, saying, you won't have some massive warehouse there, but yet you heard Mr. Helen just describe, they're waiting to put some massive warehouse there as they continue to rezone. So, you know, we look at that, and you say, it's an industrial area. I'm seeing a lot of gold color there, right? So to me, that's residential, right? And, and so you wonder, you know, it's, is it spot? It's hard to say that that's spot, but you wonder where it's, where it stops, right? And what the plan is. And once it's rezoned, they're legally entitled to build within that, you know, within that box of what that zoning could be. They don't have to go to the planning board, as the planning board has told me many times, they're legally entitled to do things that. So I, I want to say, like, is this piece of property something I'm saying nobody should do anything on? No, I want you to think through these decisions that seem to be made time and time again, that has told you, oh, there's another bite at the apple, this will never happen, there'll never be anything there you don't want to see, and think, where's it next? Is it across the street? What is next? The other, that, I guess that wasn't a question, but the other question I have is frequently, I've said, what about the traffic? They talk about the traffic, and they say it's right near the entrance ramps. You can't say what's going to be there. You can say, if it's residential, you can tell me what's going to be there, can't you, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen? You can tell me. It's going to be a house with two or three cars in the driveway that are going to add to the line of traffic that goes back past South Street on some mornings. But if they're going to build anything else, probably not going to be two or three cars coming or going each day per parcel, right? And so I just urge you to think about that area. Mr. Helen talked about it too, the traffic. We go on and on and on about the traffic there. They said, you know, through four sets of lights. I live a mile and a half from 495, 20 minutes many times, 20 minutes, right? What is the future of that intersection? Business, business, business. How is it going to stop? A bank is zoned there. It was funny when they said that. Quick access to 495. Are the police officers here? Is that what they want to hear? The bank is going to be right there with quick access to 495. But I think about it, you know, and I appreciate it, and thank you guys very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, there's-
I think you got two of them.
Yeah, I got two, that's all right. Greg, you're next.
Actually, I'm going to ask my husband to be next, but, um, hi, everyone. My name is Michaela Duff. That's my husband Ian over there, and this is our daughter Vivian. We live at 680 King Street, and this July will mark our 10-year anniversary on the street. Simply put, we love raising our family here in Franklin. Our neighborhood is fantastic, all of our neighbors are fantastic, we can walk to the park, and it is pretty convenient to get around. I'm going to keep my comments on the rezoning short and sweet. It's easy to look at this map and think that this area is less residential than it really is. Just because we are next to the highway and there, the street does have lots of car traffic, it doesn't mean that this isn't an otherwise quiet residential neighborhood. There are no businesses on our street, and there haven't been for what I'm told is 80-plus years. The nursing home is not a high-traffic business, as you can see, it's zoned residential, and neither is the local fire station, which is the gray next to the box, it doesn't have high traffic. I'm terrified that if rezoned, this is going to be a gas station. Let's get honest, that's exactly what they're thinking of putting in here. We walk by the street every day to walk my daughter to school in the summer. She goes to the daycare in the industrial park, she goes to Bright Horizons. A gas station would, in, in this space exactly, would completely change the feel, the family feel of the neighborhood, at the expense of the homeowners. Please question who this amendment would benefit, and vote in the best interest of your neighbors on King Street. So I see my time to my husband. Thank you.
Greg, you had your hand up next, please. Name and address, please.
Name's Greg Delaco, I live at 701 King Street. I lived there, in that area, for 73 years. Hopefully, there'll be a few more. I really want to address the residential aspect, that, first of all, the Nissuti property's not sandwiched between anything. The assisted living facility is in the back, okay? And they've got a fire station right next door, which I don't consider being sandwiched. If you stop at the Nissuti property, and you go up, and then all forest, all the way into Rentham, you'll see residential. If you go down King and Washington, all the way into Bellingham, residential with few exceptions. So it is a residential area, and to, to say that putting a business there of any type is going to alleviate traffic is a ludicrous proposition. And I'm just hoping that everybody will take into consideration what it would mean for the, the neighborhood there, which is, you know, we've accepted, the industrial park is there, and that would, that made sense at the time, it still does, but not something like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anyone else? Please, just name and address. Sorry, you have to repeat the address.
Hi, Ian Duff, 680 King Street. Adjust this a little. Oh, all right. Chairman Mercer, members of the town council, thanks for your time today, thanks for your consideration. So I'm a, I'll try to be concise, I, I have trouble with that, you can ask my wife. I'm a hardworking guy from a humble background, who's coming up on a decade of residency, as you just heard from Michaela. We love this town and the people we've gotten to know, right? This is the perfect place to raise a family. Development of the empty parcel is a good idea, right? This zoning amendment is problematic, and I encourage you to vote it down. On the map, it looks like a win-win-win, right? So why do I have such an issue with it? So, Mr. Evans, this is when it gets a little awkward for me, and maybe for you. The petitioner has hidden his intended use for this site. He has asked for the zoning change in order to limit the protections our neighborhood has when he moves forward with permitting. When I spoke at length with Mr. Evans in October, he was cagey and would say only the highest of best use. I even offered my support if it was anything other than a gas station, and the answer alarmingly stayed the same. In the planning board meeting on November 20th, he said unqualified, quote, "I don't have any particular plans for this site." But what he failed to account for is that he had already explained his intentions in the public record. When asked by town staff back on June 5th if he had any concept plans, he wrote in reply, "Boller is working on them." Bowler is a major civil engineering firm. Then a week later, on June 12th, he wrote, "We are exploring putting a fuel service station with accessory convenience store-type retail." And a few lines later, "Car washes and banks are other potential uses we are exploring here." As a savvy businessman, he wants to take advantage of our already congested road. That's natural, but it's not right for him to be explicitly denying his plans while asking for this change. The discussion should be around a variance or special permit, but Mr. Evans knows his goal is too far out of character at the site of a family home on our street, Nissuti's home. In the planning board meeting, Mr. Evans claimed, quote, "This site is certainly not a residential site." But that's how it's been zoned for 80 years. His parcel had a house on it until it was abandoned many years ago, I have no idea when, and the site includes the Nissuti's well-kept home. That's about as residential as it gets. Am I right? In his change.org petition of January 18th, he wrote, "It has no direct residential of butters. But wouldn't a Realtor like him know that in our state zoning laws, a butter includes land directly across a street, road, or way?" So the site has three single-family of butters, as you can see. Actually, if you count that one, that's backed off, maybe it's four, but it's three homes, and the assisted living residence as well. It's tough to know what the area is really like from an overhead map. Many comments in the hearing so far have implied that fire station number two is undesirable neighbor. It's attractive, it's set back, it's surrounded by mature trees. Dell is so far back, we can't see it from the sidewalk. The enclave is barely in sight, and it makes an excellent neighbor. That's a perfect variance for a neighborhood like ours. It's essentially an apartment building, and it makes no difference to us that it has staff. Please take a look at the pictures I took yesterday and make your own judgment, so pass them out in a second. We have a lot of, through traffic certainly, but the amendment is asking our neighbors to live across from a business instead of a home. Every zone has an edge, and shifting those boundaries betrays folks who trust it their So even if you accept all this as normal advocacy for the change, the amendment itself is flawed. It furthers two goals in the updated master plan, but it works against 11 of our goals as a town. Do people come before you and complain that they need more gas stations? No, of course they don't. The community is concerned about housing. Surely, tearing down an occupied home is not the answer. Two members of this council have mentioned the term "spot zoning" in hearings on this amendment. As you know, zoning creates a comprehensive plan for future land use. Spot zoning refers to the illegal singling out of small pieces of land for a different use without clear benefit to public welfare. It seems self-evident that this is spot zoning. And here's why. The zoning was recently changed for the 555 warehouse. If this had been a good idea based on the use and disposition of the surrounding parcels, it would have been identified during that review. The amendment ignores parcel 313056, which you can kind of see in the corner there, on Upper Union Street and under the power lines. That parcel would still be zoned, SFR 3, would be cut off from the zone in the new map, as you can see. And it was always less likely to become a home than the site in question, the fellow lot in question, right? Nobody's going to build a single-family residence under the power lines. The change is not similar to the Stop and Shop Business Zone expansion where access was directly onto a four-lane state route. Busy businesses were next door and parcels did not all belong to one petitioning LLC. Revenue is not part of public welfare at Land Court, but revenue is the only justification we've heard in the hearings today, other than the arguments today about traffic, which I don't think hold water. Perhaps more relevant than anything I can say is the planning board's advice. And I'd like to correct the record there. They did participate in that meeting. Mr. Evans spoke. It actually was voted on twice. There was a vote, they voted it down, he spoke, they voted again. Yep. In the November 20th meeting, planning board members voted not to recommend due to the residential character of the street, the proximity of single-family homes, and the width of the road. I measured that myself curb-to-curb and it's 39 feet wide at the beginning of the site and 49 feet at the boundary of the fire station. Traffic already backs up to Forest Street every morning. The site will simply not support the kinds of high-traffic uses a business zone allows. And I hope you'll see the practicality of the planning board's recommendation. I value development and I'm aware of our town's needs, but this change in zoning is the wrong way to go about it. Please vote no on this amendment, which would allow disruptive uses next to our homes and which is a step too far. Bring my counterproposal for 10 acres of neighborhood commercial zone up to a vote or lend your support for a variance in SFR 3 that would actually be a win for all stakeholders. Thank you for consideration. Chairman, may I hand out those pictures?
Sure, go ahead.
All right. That's appropriate.
Thank you.
And this is from Mayor Sally, Mayor Governor. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone? Please come forward. Name and address.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Christina Percoco. May I approach with some handouts?
Yep.
Thank you.
I have it.
Yeah, thanks.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay. So my name is Christina Percoco. I am the owner of the property at 637 King Street, which is situated directly across the parcels in question, that middle one on the map. Sorry. In June of 2022, I had the pleasure of purchasing this property as my first home, drawn to the residential character of King Street with its forested landscapes and nearby wetlands that are behind my house. Despite the traffic on King Street, the natural surroundings have afforded me a valued sense of privacy. However, the recent acquisition of the parcel across from mine and the subsequent proposal to rezone from Single Family Residential 3 to business zoning for the purpose of constructing a gas station and a convenience store has significantly disrupted the tranquility of our neighborhood. This proposed development, which is positioned less than 100 feet from my residence, has cast a shadow over what was an otherwise joyous milestone in my life. I respectfully urge each council member to consider the following adverse effects that such a rezoning could have on King Street, its residents, and the broader Franklin community. The first concern that I have is around traffic, which is obviously a big topic for tonight. This proposed location is situated on the road that already experiences significant congestion. Daily occurrences of traffic standstills extending more than 600 feet from the traffic signal in front of the fire station to the entrance of the neighboring senior living facility, the Enclave. This high volume of traffic substantially increases the time required for residents to safely exit their driveways, as is. One of the parcels under consideration directly borders the Franklin Fire Station. An increase in traffic associated with a gas station could impede the prompt deployment of emergency vehicles from the station, potentially elevating risk of traffic collisions and compromising public safety. My second concern is around the character of the neighborhood. In reference to some of the remarks made at the planning board meeting regarding the neighborhood zoning, I would like to offer a clarification. Contrary to the assertion that the area across the street falls under business zoning, it's important to note that there are, in fact, three residential properties directly opposite these parcels. Given that the surrounding land on King Street is residential, excluding the fire station, which is set back over 100 feet from the road, one must consider whether the proposed rezoning could constitute spot zoning. And I have Exhibit A in the back of this packet for you to review. The proposed development would necessitate the demolition of a residential structure that is currently in sound condition. This action is predicated on a private agreement between the parcel owners regarding their property, which raises concerns about the appropriateness of altering the community fabric for this purpose. The construction phase of a gas station, as was stated, would introduce a period of heightened noise and disruption. Furthermore, operational aspects of a gas station, which may include loud patrons at various hours, would significantly alter the current noise levels experienced by residents. Concerning light pollution, neighborhood is currently characterized by residential lighting with intermittent streetlights. The installation of something like a gas station that the business zone would potentially allow would require substantial illumination throughout the night, possibly around the clock, which would adversely affect the local ambiance. It's also imperative to examine the correlation between gas stations and crime rates. This is a residential neighborhood. Such an analysis would provide insight into the potential impact on the safety and security of our current residential community. There is an existing 24-hour 7-Eleven gas station located less than a half a mile away from these two parcels. My next concern, my third concern, is around property value. The issue of property value depreciation in proximity to gasoline stations is well documented. There was a study published in the Journal of Sustainable Real Estate in 2017 that identified an average decrease of about 16% in property values within 100 meters of a gas station. So it's crucial to consider whether such an economic impact on the neighboring homeowners could be viewed as a regulatory taking and whether that has been adequately evaluated. My property, which features a circular driveway, is frequently used by motorists on King Street as a turnaround point already. This has resulted in multiple instances of damage to my brick retaining wall, necessitating repeated repairs. The introduction of a business zone and the subsequent construction of a gas station, as intended, would likely exacerbate this issue, leading to more frequent property damage. My fourth concern would be around the health hazards associated with this. Elevated ozone levels, commonly associated with vehicular emissions, linked to respiratory ailments and asthma, things like benzene, which is a constituent of gasoline, recognized as a carcinogen. Extensive literature on this. Notably, the NIH conducted a study along with several international studies, which indicate a significant correlation between living near fueling stations and an increase in various types of cancer. Community and environmental defense services recommends guiding new gas station sites to where they will be at least 500 feet from residentially-zoned properties, schools, other locations. Rezoning this current single-family residential parcel to business and installing something like a gas station, sorry, would only allow for about 100 feet to the residential parcels across the street and about 350 feet or less to the abutting senior living facility, which I have highlighted in Exhibit B. Finally, we do have nearby wetlands. The proposed site for this rezoning and gas station is less than 200 feet from designated protected wetlands on my property and my neighbor's property. According to Chapter 181 of the Wetlands Protection Bylaw in Franklin, activities within close proximity to such resource areas are presumed to have a high likelihood of adverse impact, both during this construction phase and subsequent operations. So it's critical to inquire whether the Conservation Commission has conducted an assessment in line with these regulations. And you can see the distance in Exhibit C. And also, a thorough evaluation of the area's high-water table and also an in-depth stormwater runoff and pollution assessment is warranted, particularly given the topographical elevation variance between the road and where the wetlands are. In closing, the proximity of an existing gas station, which is less than a half a mile away on King Street, calls into question the necessity of introducing another such establishment. It's important to consider the broader impact of individual ambitions on the community. It seems unlikely that anyone, including the parcel owner himself, would prefer to reside in a home situated directly across from a gas station. Although the intent is clear, changing the current single-family residential 3 zoning to business zoning would allow for the possibility of not only a gas station, but a variety of high-impact businesses that would create immediate and long-term detriments to this neighborhood. Proposed rezoning could substantially diminish the quality of life for all nearby residents and my ability to enjoy my property. Maintaining this current single-family residential 3 zoning allows for the potential of less intrusive businesses, which is demonstrated by the enclave at 655 King Street, which aligns more harmoniously with the neighborhood's character. So with all above considerations, please reject the zoning map amendment 24901. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to please? She was at first. You'll be next. Margaret.
My name is Margaret Renerio. I reside at 651 King Street. I respectfully request that the council reject the zoning changes for the many reasons stated by the neighbors.
Yeah.
I heard you.
In addition to the reasons stated by the neighbors, I would just like to add that the industrial park has a rhythm that's largely during the business day, Monday through Friday, and then it falls off. But if the property was rezoned, the various, many businesses that could be there would likely be morning, noon, and night, seven days a week. The fire station, the ball fields, the assisted living facility, they're very active, but they provide a very unique and valuable service to our neighborhood, the town, and surrounding communities. And again, I would respectfully request that you reject the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Name and address, please.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what we'd do without Steve.
Josh Olson, 659 King Street. Sally Grant, who lives at 660 King Street, could not be here and she asked me to read her letter to you onto the record. Unfortunately, I cannot be at the town council's public hearing on February 28th. I respectfully submit the following for your review on the town council's agenda item regarding the rezoning of the parcels on King Street from Single Family Residential 3 to business. These parcels are a residential neighborhood on King Street and have raised concerns for myself and my neighbors that I would like to address to you. The rezoning of parcels 313-61 and 313-62 would significantly impact the lives and well-being of the local residents to include the nursing home, preschool, and the fire station. It would dramatically change the character of the area. Although a busy street at times, we view this as a residential neighborhood and community. To insert a commercial enterprise would dramatically change what has been long-established and would impact on the owner's fundamental rights. The planning board voted no to recommending this rezoning. A rezoning has been recommended twice before and it did not pass. At the planning board meeting, though, there were some characterizations made of the neighborhood that I would like to address in case they are mischaracterized again. It was suggested that this is in character with what already exists. It is not. The nursing home was characterized as commercial. It is not. It is residentially-zoned, set back, and in keeping with the neighborhood. The industrial park is not on King Street and is set back off of Constitution Boulevard. Directly across from the parcels proposed for rezoning are two residential homes, not commercial or industrial. Once you go through the lights at Constitution Boulevard, there is a fire station and then all residential, a neighborhood just as any other. A place where children walk to King Street Community Park or the local preschool. A place where neighbors share in each other's lives and enjoy a quality of life that would be significantly impacted should these residential parcels be rezoned. Sally went on to list out health hazards, quality of life impacts, infrastructure concerns, impacts on high-water table, environmental and land development, and impacts on fundamental rights of property values, which the other neighbors have covered just to respect your time.
Thank you.
And you have the letter.
Thank you.
But in summary, first and foremost, this is a residential community and the quality of life and the value impact to those currently residing in this neighborhood would be too great if these parcels were to be rezoned. Secondly, as many of the points have suggested, there are too many issues to this spot rezoning to make this spot rezoning a value-added to the town of Franklin. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please. Steve? Name and address, please.
Richard Chestacov. I live at 627 King Street. I've lived there for 45 years and I've seen a lot, a lot of changes on King Street, especially once they tried the rezon in that 634 King Street twice, once as industrial and once as commercial, okay? And of course, it never went through. My concern is, like everyone else, is the traffic there, okay? And then the rainwater runoff that goes on to the main street, where we'll go down and it'll go into the wetlands right across from Upper Union Street. There's a runoff there. And plus, my other concern is they've just rezoned 585 King Street and there'll be a warehouse that go up there. From what I understand, when I was at the meeting there, they figured once it gets settled, there'll be like 20 to about 200 vehicles in and out. And that's my main concern, so I hope the town council rejects it. Also, I believe I sent you this all the way.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on this bylaw amendment? Okay, is there anyone out there in Zoomland that would like to speak on this bylaw amendment? I don't see anyone. Do you? Okay, I will go to the council.
Glenn has a question, but I just have a statement, please. Well, I don't know what you want to do first.
Well, you're the EDC chair. I'll go to you first.
Okay. Then you can ask your question. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. First, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, up through the chair. First, I'd like to thank everyone for all of your emails, phone calls. I had to write this all down. I wrote it yesterday and today, so I did not confer with anyone. Just in case a lot of you think about it a little bit. First, all right, thank you all for your emails and phone calls, taking the time to speaking with me in person, coming to the senior center office hours, right? We all think about your ideas and your concerns, your opinions, and it's great to have you all here tonight to talk about this. You know, these are not easy decisions for anyone to make, and I just wanted to think a little bit about why we're here tonight. We're not here to discuss a certain project. We're here to discuss one of the town council's tasks, which is to find ways that we can help us increase the revenue without adding to infrastructure costs. You know, we pull our property taxes, new growth, local receipts, state funding together, and then we decide how we can pay for our safety services, like police and fire, the infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, playgrounds, open space, water, sewer, all of our facilities. And let's not forget our schools, right? We have to pay for all this. How do we do this? How do we pay for all these out of the revenue that we receive? So the council's job is to get the most revenue we can out of every parcel in town. And why is that? So we can have a, we can create a more sustainable budget and not have to worry about how we can pay for all the things we rely on. We also need to keep in mind the percentages of business, industrial, and commercial properties versus residential properties, right? So we want to make sure that we don't burden the residential people who have residential properties, because if we let our industrial and commercial properties go down below 20%, 19%, we're going to burden all of us taxpayers that live in the town with more property taxes. We have tasked our professional staff to recommend areas where we can improve the potential for new growth while not adding to our infrastructure costs. And why is this important? Again, because we have saved large tracts of open space, which is awesome, right? We want to save all the open space. We want to keep all these areas pristine. We've saved over 200 acres since we've started to collect money from the CPA, and those purchases have limited our potential for new growth in that area and for getting new revenue. It's a balance. It's like a seesaw, right? So we need to allow for new growth to go into new places if we want to save other place, other land. It's just the way things work. I'd say probably all of us up here don't like the way things work, but these, this is kind of like how it has to happen. It is very difficult. Again, we need to find every single parcel across Franklin to get the most revenue out of it. That is our job as town council members. There's planning board people, there's the ZBA, there's the Conservation Commission. Everybody has their own special role in this, and our role is to make sure that we have a balanced budget. Our professional staff has identified this area as a potential revenue builder. While I love the idea of a neighborhood commercial zone, the zone itself has issues that are not ideal for growth. And I know the Land Views and Zoning Subcommittee of the Master Plan are actually, they've been discussing this, to change this zone, to make it a little bit easier and not quite as restricted. So why did we pick the business zone, or why did they pick the business zone? First and foremost, our town staff experts suggested this as the best possible solution. You know, it's the best possible solution. It's not like 100% is going to be great, right? Sometimes solutions are not popular, but we have to find the best way forward. We are pulling the business zone from across the street, like the lot line cleanups that we have been doing for years. We do this routinely. We just move the zones and fix the lines. The business zone allows for uses like a country store, a general store, a garden center, a bank, co-working spaces, artisanal and craftmaker spaces, and an art gallery. That's by use. The filling station is not by right. It would require a special permit from the planning board. But we're not here to talk about specific projects, okay? We're talking about changing the zoning of these parcels to create the potential for new growth for the town's budget that benefits all of Franklin. And that's what we're here. That's why we're all here, is to think about what benefits all of Franklin. Sure, you know, we don't have to do anything. We can just not do this, but there are consequences for not allowing for new growth now. How do we fund the budget without it? How do we pay for all the services we count on? That's why the Economic Development Subcommittee voted unanimously to send this forward, and the town council voted unanimously to send it to the planning board, because that's our job, to find ways to balance the budget that everyone in Franklin relies on. Now, I'm going to ask you all to do a little homework for me. I'd like you to ask to check out the zoning podcast series that Councilor Frangello and I have been putting together with help from Steve Sherlock and a lot of other really cool guests out there. And I think it will help everyone understand the situation a little better, and then maybe we can see if we can come to an understanding about what we're trying to do. So I'm going to put this QR code up here. Chris, can you zoom in on that? There's one over there on the table, too. Maybe you guys can zoom. There you go. All right. You can, if you can use your phones, you can scan the QR code, and it'll bring you to episode eight of the podcast series, and it's called New Growth. Okay? So thank you. Thank you for listening. Thank you all for being here. This is like, this is like so much fun, isn't it? No, it's not. It's not really. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Hamblin. Councilor Jones, you had a question?
Yes, sir. In all fairness, I wouldn't be doing my job or my due diligence as the clerk of the council without bringing up some procedural things, one of which is the fact that the, it is a fact that the Economic Development Committee did in fact unanimously approve this, and it is in fact that the town council referred it to the planning board, and now their planning board has referred it back to us. But in all fairness to the process, the planning board didn't, the full planning board didn't actually in fact have an opportunity to have a fair hearing on this, and I think it would be within our best interests to refer it back to the planning board, to the full planning board, once we get to legislation for action, just to get their opinion on that.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Councilor Sheridan?
Kind of the same note. I voted for this trice on the Subcommittee and on the full council, but the idea was, one, get comments from the planning board, and also get input from neighbors. And we got the input from neighbors. We got a list of people who support it, many of whom don't live in Franklin, and apparently none who came to speak here. So I would support either voting it down or sending it back to the planning board.
Thank you, Councilor Sheridan. Councilor Delacro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so a couple questions. First of all, that is all residential. To me, that spot zoning, I actually was going to read the same thing that gentleman down King Street read, because I had it on my phone. But the traffic coming out, if you put anything there coming out taking a left, the poor people on King Street that are on the opposite side, for two to three hours a day, my daughter lives at 731 King Street, she cannot come out and take a left because the traffic is too bad. The traffic is unbelievable. I know you said that that end of town needs a store up there, but those people on Washington Street and stuff like that, they don't go up King Street. I live off of Washington Street. I haven't gone down King Street in years because of the traffic. You come down Washington, you go down Cleveland, you go up Union, and you're at the gas station. That's what the people on the other end of town do. So I'm totally against this. I know what Melanie is saying, but I'm also here for the people, not just for the money. So I'm going to say that I'm totally against this anyway.
Thank you, Councilor Delacro. Councilor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Councilor Delacro. You made some very good points. First, I just wanted to speak so you can, so it comes out of my mouth how I feel. Thank you to the residents. You're very passionate. I see some lifetime Franklin residents back there who've lived there forever, so I know Mr. Evans is actually a lifetime Franklin resident also. Not that that matters, but I'm just putting it in context. Whew, what is I going to, all right. This goes to Mr. Taberner. The elephant in the room is obviously the gas stations, and you guys did an eloquent explanation of that. Basically, a business like that needs to get, like they said, a special permit. It's not just by right. That's all I want to hear out of your mouth.
Correct. That's exactly right. A gas station in the business zone would require a special permit.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I have to go against Councilor Delacro a little bit here, because I've always been solid about we need new growth, we need new revenue to survive in this town. And I'm just not sure if it's not at a highway exit, where does it go? And, you know, I apologize to the neighbors for that, but I just don't, you know, I look at like Exit 17, or whatever it's called now, where the two buildings up there where Starbucks is and the other building there, those were all just houses not that long ago. And we just, and we needed the...
Councilor Chandler?
Yeah, those houses weren't there that long ago, and they've helped us educate our children, okay? I'm glad you think it's funny, but you know what, Mr. Chairman? I'm all set.
Thank you, Councilor Chandler. Councilor Cormier-Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Melanie, this is certainly fun tonight, right?
I don't think it is.
But no, I'm trying to cut the tension, Mr. Chairman, a little bit. Remember, that's what I do. I do appreciate everyone's concerns tonight and everybody coming out and speaking and contacting us. I don't think it's too often that this panel gets to make decisions because so, like this, because so often developers seem to be able to just go to the planning board and get things approved. They go to ZBA, and they get variances, and residents get pretty upset because neighborhoods change. We're getting overdeveloped in many, many, many places, and oftentimes, this panel just seems like, you know what, there's not much we can do. And, well, this is one of the occasions that we have the power to do something, to say to the residents of town that we're listening and saying to them, you know what, maybe it's not perfectly zoned right now, and maybe that does have to be looked at for some alternate use, but to change it from residential to business and then pretty much just allow whatever somebody wants within right or to go, I mean, let's face it, they go before, no offense to Mr. Evans and Mr. Cornetta, but if you go before the planning board and ask for a gas station, you're going to get a gas station. So I, and it's just being honest, right? We don't see that group saying no to a whole lot that has to do with development. So I, I'm just siding with the residents on this one and saying that, you know what, that area of town is all residential. It's got kids, it's got families, it's got parks, we've got our senior establishment there, we've got the fire station there. I am concerned about traffic. I agree with all the homework that was done by Mrs. Prokoko. It was very, very good presentation. That doesn't mean I wouldn't be in favor of some alternate use for that property down the road. I just don't like what's presented here tonight, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier-Ledger. Any other councils? Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ten years ago, when I sat here on the council as chairman of Economic Development, we had a discussion with the current property owners that were, that are the property that is at the corner of at the time Exit 16, and we came to a collective body and agreed that that area should be rezoned business. Now, that business zone's been in place for almost 10 years. Not much has come of that property in 10 years. Unfortunately, we had hoped that it would be developed into something significant by now, but nothing's, not much has come of it. But at the Shaws and Stop &amp; Shop area, yes, it's true. We have, we had some locations immediately adjacent to Stop &amp; Shop, and one of the things that we are legally obliged not to do here in the town or any municipality in the state of Massachusetts is to spot zone. But we are, we do have the capacity, we do have the means by our rights to extend existing zones. Brian, if you don't mind kind of giving a recap as to the thought process that went behind taking the existing zone that is Stop &amp; Shop and moving it across the street, and the thought process of extending this zone and moving it across the street?
Okay. See if I can remember exactly what was discussed back then. We had a substantial area that is business zoned, the old shopping plaza, for instance, where Stop &amp; Shop is. So extending that across the street seemed like a logical thing, but it was not, you know, by any means a spot zone. It was just expanding upon it. Now, this area here, because business is diagonally across, a business zone is diagonally across the street, it seemed that if you're not going to go with a residential zone, that the business zone was appropriate. I think the industrial, expanding an industrial zone would have been an obvious big mistake because you don't want industrial uses in that area. So that was your, that was the choice. It was either we leave it alone, or you go with a business zone. That was, that was the thinking at the time. So it allows a variety of commercial uses in that area, which is what we were looking to do if we're going to rezone that area.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Councilor Jones.
Councilor Frangello?
Councilor Frangello?
Yeah, I'm bummed I couldn't be there for all the fun.
Yeah. I don't think any of us believe you.
Well, I think, A, I want to say, I mean, this is, you know, one of the most, you know, well-reasoned public discussions that we've had in my time on town council. I think people on both sides have been very thoughtful in making their cases, and so I appreciate everyone that's been involved in this. I think Councilor Hamblin and Councilor Chandler put it well. I mean, let's be clear, one cannot care about the people without caring about the money. It takes money to pay for fire services. It takes money to pay for police services. It takes money to pay for our schools. It takes money to keep our roads paved. It takes money to keep our senior services available. So we need to find opportunities for new growth, and our planning department identified this area that seems, you know, what I've heard in the cases is concerns with a gas station. I have not heard a compelling case for why those parcels should remain residential, at least not one that's convinced me that that's the highest use. Because it's right off the highway, it's not a walkable area. It's the end of the residential. It's a sort of transition into a pretty industrial, wide-road, you know, off-highway space. And so why, of course, of course, that would be an opportunity to, you know, add a corner business that brings in new revenue for the community. As the actual use, hey, I hate gas stations as much as the next person. I work in climate policy, and I think that, you know, I'm quite concerned about environmental concerns. This is not a use case conversation, all right? This is not a question about, does this become a gas station? As has already been stated, that's something that comes later at a planning department, or we as a town have a collective conversation about, you know, whether gas stations should be allowed in certain zones. But the question here is, does this zone make sense to no longer be residential and be a space that can provide more revenue as well as a service to both the community and people coming off the highway? I think this is, you know, it's not an easy one. None of this is fun. Every opportunity is going to have impacts. I don't feel convinced otherwise, you know? This seems like it was thought through and is a slight improvement to the community.
You all set? Councilor Frangello?
It looks like it.
Councilor Plegrey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having listened to all that spoke here tonight and the applicants here, are we sure that this is going to be a gas station, first of all? We're all assuming it, but have we seen anything?
There's been no specific proposal.
No specific, okay, okay. Whenever I'm ready to vote on something like this, I always set up pros and cons, okay? And with my pros, I don't have anything in that column. Why would we put a gas station there? We have one, how many feet down the road? I just don't think there's a need for a gas station. May be a need for something else, but a gas station, no. Things that are the cons against it, and I agree with people that live in the neighborhood, lights. Lights are always on at a gas station all night long. And that's inconvenience for the people that live there. Traffic is the number one thing. It's traffic there now. I don't know if it's going to increase traffic, but traffic is a problem on that street. I've been on it and been held up for the longest time. The character of the, uh, neighborhood to have, um, a gas station there. It just doesn't, doesn't hit me as belonging there. And another thing, most importantly, is for health reasons, underground tanks. There could be problems with underground tanks. We've had it before in town. And do we want to take a chance with any kind of leakage there and that? I don't know. Why did the planning board vote no on this? Mr. Conetta.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to address?
Sure.
Through you.
Again, your opinion.
Yeah, I, I, I viewed the meeting. I did not participate in the meeting. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't venture a guess as to why they voted no. I believe that they felt strongly that the residential designation was being strained for this property. They rec, I think everybody recognizes that it's, it's not likely that you're going to build a new house there. The suities aside, but, but in the other parcel. And so I think they were searching for some other alternative, maybe some other, as I said, politically expedient option like neighborhood commercial. So I think there was a desire to create some type, type of, uh, a, a commercial business zone there, but they just were struggling with this notion of it being a gas station. And again, I, I would like to repeat, there is no specific proposal for this to become a gas station. If that were to come, it would need to go, as Mr. Taverner correctly indicated, it would need to go through a myriad of approvals, not the least of which would be the highest and most, the hardest, uh, permit to, to, to acquire, which is a special, a special permit, which in your zoning bylaw, you have a, a very set group of criteria that we would need to meet or that proposal would need to meet in order for that to be approved. So again, I, I think Mr. Frangello was very eloquent in saying that this is really about the concept of zoning and not a specific proposal to vote against this because you want to prevent a particular use being brought into this neighborhood. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
No, no.
I'm one of the owners of the property. Can I speak or?
Not right now, you can't.
Okay, I wanted to, I wanted to help address.
No.
No, not right now, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, again, the pros and the cons. I have to be convinced that there is good reason to put a gas station there. And I don't see that. So I think it's, it's time we listen to the residents, the neighbors and that, and see where we go from here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Plegry. Are you all set? Any other counselors? I'll give you one statement, sir, please. Come forward, name and address.
My name is Dusty Burke and Joe and I own the property. And, uh, so I, I want, a lot of good discussion and animated and well thought out. And, uh, and I must say, in, in listening to it, that it, I want to just make a quick clarifying comment that, that when Joe and I talked about the possibility of buying this property, one of the things, and really the primary thing that Joe had, that Joe and I had been contemplating was the possibility of putting, Joe has a, a business in town and many of you know of his business. And it's a driving school and he's educated a lot of, a lot of, probably your children and maybe even you on, in driving. And this is Joe's, one of Joe's fields. And, uh, and Joe had, had been thinking with me about the possibility of, 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 potentially relocating the driving school to another location where we could have a more of a custom-designed building and be able to have something that's convenient, even more convenient to, um, his customers that are coming from a, from the regional area, the local area and the regional area. So we, we looked at that possibility and we were excited about that possibility. The problem, the challenge that we face in today's world in, in doing that is we, we need to develop enough of the property to be able to economically put a building up at all with construction costs being what they are. So we would need to build something bigger than, than just a, than just a driving, uh, school that would accommodate, uh, the size of space that Joe would need for his space for East Coast. And the, and therefore we need, we need some economies of scale in order to be able to, be able to build that. During that discussion that Joe and I were having and contemplating, we also, uh, we, we, we contemplated other uses. One of them was a gas station, convenience store, um, but would be one, a convenience store that would be a, a neighborhood market. I had been, I had assisted on the, on the Garrett's Family Market in Milford. And so that was one of the ideas that Joe and I had contemplated, which Joe liked, I liked. And that, well, is a possibility that we were contemplating for the site. But we, we aren't in any way wedded to that concept. We, we want to be able to put a, a, a commercially viable retail professional building on the site at a minimum. And, uh, and, uh, we, we can work with the community in accommodating, we hope as, as, as best we reasonably can with respect to realistic economic pressures, um, to, to provide a, a, a business there and a building there and a commercial, uh, process there that would be, provide helpful services to the community in demand in the community. And, uh, and one that would be also economically viable and, uh, something Joe and I could be proud of. And, and so that, we're, we're open to any type of creative discussion and communication and negotiation and, uh, and sensitivity to everybody's, uh, everybody's input. And, uh, I, I just wanted to express that. Thank you for giving me a damn moment to speak.
Okay. You're welcome. Counselor Frangello, do you still, is your hand up again or is it still up? You forgot one thing.
I'll be good about raising and unraising. Thank you. I just wanted to real quickly, uh, clarify because I was hearing, um, my, my fellow counselor. I just want to, this is not a vote on whether this becomes a gas station, right? That is very much not what we're doing here. This is a question of whether this still makes sense as a residential area or whether we can get, uh, more value for the town. And with, with, while balancing the impact on, uh, the community in this space by having it be a business. And at a later conversation than we have a conversation about what that actual, uh, project is. But it's, it's just, you know, I, I was hearing, we're voting on, on a gas station. We're very much not.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello, and you are correct, we are not.
I just wanted to reinforce that point as a matter of legal nuance. At the moment, it's strictly residential. And what's in front of you gives you a variety of other choices, which do include a gas station by special permit and a variety of other uses as well. So I would advise you to just keep it in the broader context and not fixate on that.
Thank you, Attorney Sir. Very last, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we allowed to address the, the owner or?
If you have a question, a specific question.
Sure, Mr. Evans, if, if for some reason it remains a residential zone parcel and not a business parcel, what would you and your partner like to do with it?
Thank you, Counselor. If it remains residential, it would be a very challenging parcel to develop into a single-family residence as, who wants to live next to the fire station? So it, it would be a very challenging, um, property to develop. And most likely it would probably go undeveloped or it would not be developed to its fullest potential.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's hard, it's hard to, it's hard to say, but it, you know, we, if I, Mr. Chairman, could I, could I speak a moment or further?
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Let me formally introduce myself, Joe Evans. I'm a long, lifelong Franklin resident. My mother still lives in Franklin, uh, former Franklin police officer in the late nineties. My mother's a former Franklin teacher. I benefited from the town, public, uh, public, educated in Franklin Public Schools. Retired state trooper, uh, in 2020. I've operated East Coast Driving School for fifteen years. Educated thousands of, uh, town and regional kids to, taught them how to drive a car. I'm, I'm not a developer, but I've been involved in, in, I'm involved in commercial real estate. And, um, I, I just, um, a couple of projects that I've been involved in directly. Brought Santa Fe Burrito Grill to the center of Franklin. I own that property. And I've owned, I owned it, I've subsequently sold it. I've also, I also brought Glenn Farmer Distillery to West Central Street. So anything that I do, anything that I do on the, on this particular parcel, of course, as Dusty reiterate, I reiterate what Dusty said, we, I'm looking, we're looking to do something that is, would benefit the town, the residents, all the residents. I appreciate the, the comments made by the, the residents tonight. Some taken out of context, of course. But, um, you know, we're, I'm here to do the right thing. I live in town. And, um, I, I believe in this site. When I approached Jamie and Amy with it, we got very positive feedback, which subsequently we closed the property after that. So, um, and if I could just touch on one other thing, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for giving me the time. I'm very familiar, obviously, with this area being a resident and, and the traffic, uh, the traffic concerns. And I think, uh, because the, the traffic is so great, makes it such a great commercial site. I mean, let's call it what it is. It's, 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 it's not a residential site. And that's really why we're here tonight. And I think that the planning, uh, the planning board kind of got ahead of themselves, to be frank with you, and wanted to talk about gas stations. And it really wasn't appropriate to talk about gas stations because there was, there's no gas site plan in front of them. There wasn't a gas, gas station site plan in front of them, nor is there one tonight. And I, I don't need to go over that again. But, um, you know, when people get off the highway, and I've gotten off a lot of interchanges in my career, in order to get gas or to get a coffee or to go to the King Street Cafe or whatever it is, if you're getting off exit sixteen, you take a left at that light and you go through three or four traffic lights. And then you come back through three or four on the way back to get back on the highway. Or if you're coming from the south side of Franklin, you're coming through four traffic lights to go to, to go to Union Street. And you're going back to, back through those four traffic lights to go back home. And I, I've been around a long time. I know, I remember when there was a, this was a very, uh, not heated, but it was a, it was a very fruitful discussion in town ten years ago about the South, residents of South Franklin do not have an opportunity to, uh, frequent a retail-type establishment on that side of 495. And please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, I, I, that, that has been a long-term discussion in Franklin. And that is also a reason that we believe this site is, is a, is a, is a, is a, really a great site for that. It is a very low residential impact, right next to the highway. And we believe it will alleviate a lot of that traffic that's going over to the Union Street side for those residents that are over there that are boggled down with traffic at the Union Street, King Street intersection. So, well, again, we don't have a specific use in mind, but I, I urge you to understand that this is, uh, this is a matter regarding, is it a good business site or is it a good residential site? I think that's really the question that, that you need to, you need to ask yourselves at this level. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I thank you for your, for your, for your additional time.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, uh, no, I, I think. And I let you speak.
I just want to. Brent Delaco, 701 King Street. This idea of this four traffic lights, in the morning with the traffic there, it doesn't matter. When the traffic isn't there, those lights aren't an issue. Go look at Dunkin' Donuts, there's a long line. People aren't waiting forever to get a coffee. They aren't waiting forever to get gas at 7-Eleven, okay? So let's just, you know, keep things in mind here. We're trying to make it sound like this is going to be so convenient. The only people it's going to be convenient for is the people making money. As far as the town's concerned, I don't know how much this is going to lower our taxes because we have one commercial building. But I just think that we ought to think about the impact of the neighborhood and all these people here. They all have said that. And I think that should be the number one, uh, priority of any elected body. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Very last one. I think we've, and short, please.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Ian Duff, 680 King Street. So I think, Mr. Evans, it's a really good framing for this. Is it better as a business or a residence, right? Next door is the firehouse. That's a residence. Our first responders are there 24 hours a day. They live there, they sleep there, they cook there. The enclave is a residence. All those folks reside there. Across the street are single-family homes. On the site, we're talking about rezoning, is an occupied single-family home with four taxpaying adults in it. So, I mean, you know, it, it's an artifact of the town's history that 495 is here and this is a neighborhood, right? Can we correct that with that zoning? It's where people are living now, right? And I've heard a lot of arguments about revenue. Obviously, we need revenue, right? I haven't heard a lot of arguments about public welfare. And I'm wondering about, I haven't heard any numbers. There's been no quantification. If, uh, business there sells a dollar, right? How much of that does Franklin see? So what does the change actually amount to? If we're going to say, these, these folks that are just adjacent to this are going to be like egregiously inconvenienced by whatever happens here, even if it's the best of the uses that are committed by right, right? What does that actually make for the town? What is, what do we see in terms of real dollars? I feel like that, that number needs to be part of this discussion. And as opposed to like a general argument for we need revenue, which is true. Obviously, you can't argue against that, that's true. But how much money does this actually amount to versus the impact of people who have resided there for years? We got one of our newest homeowners and one of our oldest homeowners, right? Two years, 40 years, right across the street. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I think, uh, we've heard an awful, an awful lot of discussion in regards to this. I, for one, I haven't had my two cents, so I'll give you my two cents now. I've lived on that end of town, on the south end of town for over 50 years. So I am very familiar with the property. I think, uh, we've kind of deviated from what the question is. I think, Mr. Evans, and I think Counselor Hamblin, Counselor Frangello, both brought it back to is the best zoning for that, those two parcels, business or residential? That's the question, not what's going there. Because that's not the question before the council. The council votes on zoning. And I applaud Counselor Hamblin's work in putting her statement together because it clearly said what the issues the community is facing. There is very little land left in Franklin to build on. And we have survived and well on new growth over the past 30 years. New growth is disappearing because there's no land to build on. And I would ask everyone sitting here to either come or tune in next Wednesday night to the Joint Budget Subcommittee meeting and hear the financial strengths that the town of Franklin is facing moving forward. We have to look at new revenue sources. This, we can only go up on the taxes two and a half percent. Proposition two and a half limits us that. We have new growth and that new growth is going down. Chapter 70 money going down. Chapter 70 money going down. Where are we going to get the money to provide the current level of services that 34,000 people have come to appreciate and count on? And I understand the communities, the concern of the residents in the community. I totally do, and I get it. But this board, this council, is here to look out for the best interest of 34,000 people. And sometimes, those decisions are really, really difficult. This being one of them. I know for me, I am disappointed that we don't have a full planning board recommendation. We only have three members of a five-member planning board. For me, and I'm going to ask the question of the town, town attorney, we can refer this back to the full planning board, can we not?
I don't think there's a clear answer to that question. This is all pursuant to a statutory procedure that's spelled out in some detail. It does not deal with that contingency. The planning board operated with a quorum, which is the three members, and a majority of a quorum is the vote. So they, they follow procedures, but there's nothing in the zoning amendment statute that provides for a resubmital. And there are time limitations in place from the time this was first filed where you have to act or go back and start over again.
Okay, doesn't referring it to the planning board?
No. It was referred once.
Right, I get that. But wouldn't that be starting all over again? Because that's what we do. That's, that's our zoning. I mean, I sit here and I know a zoning is a big part of the decisions that we as a council make. But the planning board also is a very large part of that. And I for one would like to know the opinions of a five-member planning board rather than the three-member planning board.
That seems fair.
And I guess I'm asking you, how we do that? How would we do that? I'm not saying that, that, I'm not speaking for the council, I'm speaking for myself.
I think you basically have to take no action on this and refile it and literally treat it as a do-over as opposed to leaving it, it's already pending. So you'd actually essentially have to start anew.
Okay.
Take no action on this.
So.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So what you would do is you would take no action tonight on the pending legislation. And on the March 13th meeting, what you would then do is then take another vote to refer the proposal as is, or another proposal, whatever that is. You would, you would refer that to the planning board, and then to the town attorney. I can see him shaking his head up and down over here, saying yes. Then you would just simply, they would have another hearing, and then come back with a full recommendation, and then the council will be back here again. Right, Mark? And then the clock would essentially start again. So you're really, you're not losing a lot of time as a council if you did that. The next meeting is in two weeks from tonight. You know, you could just, no action on this, and then, and then resubmit the process in two weeks. Is that okay with you, Mark?
Yeah, as long as you don't take any.
Any formal action tonight.
Final negative action, because that would make the planning board's decision the second time around binding.
Right.
The planning board would then become the decider in some degree.
Would we need a vote to, for a show of no action on bylaw amendment 24-901? Otherwise, how am I going to get a consensus from the council?
I'm trying to melt, to mesh a statute which sets out a procedure without particularized parliamentary procedure in the, that's in the manual, that's in the handbook. I mean, if there were mechanisms to withdraw without.
Prejudice.
Withdraw without prejudice, or something like that.
You tabled it.
Look at table.
Tableing it, the problem with tabling it is.
It's still out.
Because you're a continuous meeting body, it would have to come back at some point. That's not going to solve the problem. You know what? If you want to vote to resubmit it to the planning board and let the chips fall where they may, because otherwise, we're an uncharted term.
Yeah.
That was my original question.
Well, what's Robin's rules for that?
It's not a Robin's rules question.
There's no Robin's rules for this.
If they voted on no action, then that's a vote, they take no action. And then this essentially dies, and you start the process again.
If I ask for a vote of no action on bylaw amendment 924-901.
And then allow it to be resubmitted.
Right.
Counselor Pleygry.
Through the chair, to Mark. We have a first reading on this tonight.
Right.
So if we get to the first reading, and our motion is not to move it to a second, it dies. I think that's the easiest way.
That's a negative, but that is.
That's a negative vote. That's a negative vote. It doesn't allow, that's an action on the item, and that's what.
See, the two readings, the two readings, that's a local thing. The public hearing and the action by, following by the legislative body, that's what the statute provides for. If you take the vote, a negative vote, not to go to a second reading with it, that's a final negative action. That means if you file it again, and it goes back to the planning board, the planning board's the decider essentially, because if they vote no, then you cannot take it up again for two years.
Right.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion on bylaw amendment 24-901 of no action.
Oh, we're still on, we're still in the open air?
Yeah, yeah, let me close here. Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'm going to close the public hearing on bylaw amendment 24-901. Now, Mr. Jones.
Well, wait a minute, you got to move to legislative action.
Yep, we got to move to legislative.
It's right, it's right under.
Yep, it's.
The very next item.
No.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry.
But you got to take it out of order.
I have already, it's already scheduled to be on after the public hearing. Attorney Sorel.
I'm sorry.
That action item is already on the agenda, under the public hearing. Therefore, we can go to that. Because it's on the agenda, right there. Show them the agenda.
Just point out that it's separate legislative action, that's my only point.
All right, Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I repeat what I said. I'd like to make a motion on bylaw amendment 24-901 for the council of no action.
To take no action.
To take no action. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Yeah, a question after all this. How is this different than voting, just voting no?
Because you can't. If you vote no, it's dead.
Okay, so this is, okay.
This is neutral.
This is a neutral, this is a neutral, this allows us to give it back to the planning board to get recommendation from five members of the planning board.
Okay, so if I want to vote no, I should vote no now, and next time?
Right, right.
Got it.
Yep. Okay, clerk will call the roll. Any further discussion?
No.
Saying no, clerk will call the roll.
I don't know what I'm voting.
Send it back to the planning board.
I want to send it back there, yes. That's a yes vote, if you want it to go back. If you want it to go back to the planning board, it's a yes vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Clerk will call the roll.
Cormier Ledger.
Yes.
Sheridan.
No.
Chandler.
Yes.
Yeah.
Pleygry.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Um, yes.
Jones, yes, vice chair.
No.
Chair.
Yes.
That's seven to two, sir. Yeah.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is license transaction. License modification, change of manager of the Section 15 Retail Package Store License. Shaw's Supermarkets Incorporated, doing business as Shaw's, located at 255 East Central Street, Franklin, Mass., 02038. Clerk will read the license transaction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is license transaction, change of manager for Shaw's Supermarket, doing business as Shaw's at 255 East Central Street, Franklin, Mass., 02038. Shaw's Supermarkets Incorporated, DBA Shaw's, located at 255 East Central Street, Franklin, Mass., is seeking approval for a change of manager on a subsection 15 Wine and Malt Retail Package Store License. The new manager will be James Burns. All departments have signed off on this application, and this is a motion to approve the request by Shaw's Supermarkets Incorporated, DBA Shaw's, located at 255 East Central Street, Franklin, Mass., 02038, for a change of manager to James Burns.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Jamie, discussion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The quick and dirty is change of manager. We do these all the time. All departments have signed off on the application. Thank you.
I believe the legal counsel is on the.
Yeah, this, Jim Burns, I think, is the legal counsel for Shaw's, in case anyone has any questions. Oh, Nick, I'm sorry, Nick Zullo. Sorry, Nick. You got to take yourself off.
Nick, unmute yourself, please.
Yes, sorry, I didn't know if you wanted to, I know it's been a long hearing already.
That's okay.
I'm here on behalf of Shaw's, happy to go through anything, answer any questions you may have. But that is the gist of it, a change of record to Mr. Burns, who is now the new store director at your Shaw's on East Central Street. Happy to answer any questions about his experience, anything, making sure. But again, I know it's been a long hearing, so I don't want to take any more time than needed. But I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Questions or comments from the council?
Just quickly.
Yes, Counselor Chandler.
Just a housekeeping issue through you, Mr. Chairman. This, the paperwork I had at home and the one I got tonight, there's no check under the business type in the paperwork. Is that page 19, or? Unless your paperwork has it.
Nick, do you want to explain? I think it's on page 19, just while I'm pulling it up. There's a missing checkbox for what kind of business type.
Is this on the local? I don't, I don't see that. I apologize. But if there's a checkbox that needs to be checked, we can certainly check it. But I, I'm not seeing a page 19 on my application. I may, I don't know if it's on the form.
Oh, page, page nine, Nick, sorry.
Page nine, Nick.
Yeah, business type required, five, retail, six, restaurant, office, nonprofit, entertainment, manufacturing, healthcare, other?
It would, it would be retail. And I also, I still don't see where it is on my application.
It would be retail, number five, yep.
It would be retail, yes, sir. I apologize if that was on our behalf, but it would be retail.
That's all.
That's all, thank you. Any other questions from the council? Anyone in the public? Okay, seeing none. The clerk will call the roll on the license modification, the change of manager for Shaw's Supermarkets.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Cormier Ledger.
Yes.
Frangillo.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Pleygry.
Yes.
Jones, yes, vice chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Nine zero, sir.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, one of our favorite annual discussion items, is our OPEB actuarial report. Dan, always good to hear from you.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman and fellow councils, it's always good to be talking about this subject before you. So if we're ready, we can start in, and.
We're ready.
Okay, all right, let's jump to page three. So at the bottom of page three is basically the assets that you have in the plan. And you'll see that it's a nice increase from a little over $10 million, $10.5 million, up to $12.3 million. And the big nut here is that the investment income that lines $694,000 is a really good year. It represents about a 9% return, our assumption is 7.5%. And it's a nice uptick from the year before when it was a negative 13.6%. So a nice rebound, nice increase of the $12 million that you have available to cover benefits above and beyond the pay-go. You've been covering pay-go, but if you needed to tap some additional funds, and I heard a lot tonight about additional revenue, if things are really tough, you could use some of that $12 million to cover benefits and payments for the retirees. Not for the actives, but for the retirees. And by the way, retirees includes beneficiaries as well. Next page, please. So here's the change of liabilities. Now, what's important about the liabilities is that two years ago, we do these valuations every other year. And two years ago, the liability is about $79 million. And then the off-year, it's just a roll forward and saying, well, let's assume all assumptions are the same. They've all been realized, everything works, and what would be the new liability? And that become $85.4 million a year ago. But for '23, we actually measure the liability and say, okay, what really did happen in the last two years? And there's one item there that really stands out, it's in the middle, experience gain. Negative 18.5. So we assumed the liability would be going up a bunch. In actuality, it went down to $73.5 million. So obviously, extremely good news for the town. Your liability went down. Your funded ratio will go up, and we'll get to that. And in a moment, I'll explain why you end up with an $18 million gain on your OPEB liability. At the bottom of the page shows the net position. And you'll see at the end of the paragraph there, you increased to 16.8% funded. Two years ago, your funded ratio was about 11%. So a nice rebound there, going up to 16. And then we also did was look at what happens if the liability discount rate is something other than 7.5%? By Gatsby rules, we have to show this variation as part of your financial statement. So you'll see that if it's a 6.5% discount rate rather than 7.5%, the unfunded liability goes up to $71 million. If you actually earn 8.5%, it drops, so it went down to 57. But at the 7.5%, you're at $61.2 million. Then because you have enterprise accounts, we also have the breakout between water and sewer. And if you scroll to the next page, and there's stormwater and solid waste. So, you know, for the accountants out there, they can figure out what's going on there. And then the next table goes through, well, what if healthcare tuition or healthcare inflation was graded by 1% that what I'm assuming, or less than 1%? And we're using a 4.5% assumption on the inflation on the healthcare costs. So this gives the readers of your financials some sense of what happens if the inflation is higher or lower than what we're assuming. And you can see the impact there. And you can see the impact there. Sewer, stormwater, solid waste. Next page, please. So the expense, uh, the expense number, because we had a nice gain, you'll see a negative number there of $5 million from, uh, the experience gain. Experience gain is amortized over a period of years, uh, which is equal to the average future working lifetime of all actives and retirees. So that's a big negative number and push your expense down substantially. This expense is nothing more than paper, though. Um, if you really want to fund the plan, you're still looking at, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of an $8 million total contribution between the pay-go and excess. So you have to increase your, um, contributions from what you did, uh, to some $3 or $4 million higher than where you are today. And based on tonight's discussion, I'm not even going to propose that you do that.
Thank you, Dan.
At the bottom of the page, um, is, this is the, the year buildup, um, where each year, no, no, go back up, bottom of, bottom of page six. Whoop, right there. Um, and this just shows, um, the liability beginning, assets at the beginning, at the end, what the net OPEB is, and you'll see your funded ratio is 16.8. And then your covered payroll at 76 million and change. And that ratio is 79.5%. And I went back and looked at where it was a while ago, um, and it was over 100, 118%. So, that is a great measurement. So if you compare Franklin to other communities, to other states, to other sponsors of these, those kind of plans, the, um, folks that look at your financials will say, wow, you guys are less than 100% of your covered payroll. So that's a really good comparison. Um, it puts you in a very favorable light if you have to go out for bonds. And also, um, also a favorable light for any improvements in your, uh, bond rating. Um, S and P, Fish, Moody's, they all look at that, and they look at that percentage, and less than 100 is a beautiful place. Okay, now next page. This just shows the amortization. Um, we could skip that. The accountants like to look at that, but, um, there's, you have a lot of amortizations going forward. The valuation, the audits that look at that. Let's move forward. And here's the medical premiums. And this is the key reason why we had an $18 million gain. Because each of those various plans, you'll see the HMO, we'll start with the HMO at the top. Um, during the last, um, couple of years, that increased about 6% per year, not too far off from the 4.5. However, the high deductible plan is only 3% higher over the two years than it used to be, and I'm assuming 4.5% per year. So there's a big gain there. The PPO is also roughly a 3% per year versus 4.5, so that's a gain. But the kicker is the Medicare. The Medicare at $290 is a 16% reduction in where it was two years ago. And I'm assuming a 4.5% increase per year. And, yeah, I think that almost all your active employees, certainly all those retiring today, are Medicare eligible. And by law, they have to be in a Medicare plan. So all the people that were, um, you were paying $360, you're now down to $290. That is the main driver of the $18 million gain on the liability. So let's, let's go forward. Uh, membership. So the membership is virtually the same. Um, a couple of years ago was, I think it was 1780. So almost no change there in membership. Um, the retirees a little bit more, the actives a little bit less, but, um, that really had minimal impact, um, on the liability. So let's move forward. Uh, let's go all the way to assumptions, which would be, um, Exhibit Four. There we go, right there. Whoop, too far. Stop right there, perfect. Whoop. There's a time delay. Scroll, scroll up one page. Page 13, there, perfect. So, and, and the Medicare cost, uh, plan costs, you'll see where I have various values of the underlying, uh, per capita claims cost for ages 64 and 65 in Medicare for non-teachers and then teachers. And when I look back at the previous valuation, I have noticed that, um, for the non-teachers, um, there was a 30% increase in the pre-65 costs, but an 18% reduction in the, in the age 65, uh, in Medicare costs. So what it means is that since a lot of people, especially group one, um, who retire at around 65, um, they don't have that higher cost at 20,000. If they do, it's only for, you know, a couple of years. And then they go to, you know, the Medicare plan, and it's an 18% reduction. On the teacher's side, um, both pre-65 and post-60, 65 are reductions. Pre-65, the teachers are 7% lower than they used to be. Uh, post-65 has 22% reduction. And for Medicare, it's a 17% reduction, um, in their, um, underlying costs, um, once they reach, you know, Medicare eligibility. So whatever you've done in terms of plan design and setting up your Medicare cost structure, um, has paid off to the tune of 18.5 million dollars. So, you know, congratulations to whoever pulled that off. Great job.
Town council.
With that, I'd be happy to, any, any question?
Especially Karen.
Of course, the council.
Smart move, Dan. Sorry, Dan, continue, please.
Uh, no, that's it. I, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Dan, we love it when you bring, when you bring us good news.
Yes. Happy to help.
Especially for the retirees.
We got a couple of them on the council here, so. Uh, well, uh, thank you, Dan. Jamie, you have any?
Nope, all good.
All good. Dan, thank you very much and sorry for keeping you up so late here.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks for your patience. Thank you again.
Who do you think?
Yeah, bye-bye. Okay. We're moving on to legislation for action.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It appears the Counselor Frangello left me.
Uh, Counselor Frangello did leave. He just texted me.
For the record.
A minute ago, so. So we will no longer need.
No longer need to do roll calls.
I, I think I saw him riding a wild bull.
Okay, moving on, legislation for action. Resolution 24 dash 03, FY24 Capital Improvement Plan. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 24 dash 03. This is an appropriation for the capital FY24. Uh, total amount requested in free cash, uh, $2,256,616. Uh, water retained earnings, $1,942,450. Sewer retained earnings, $303,000. The purpose is to appropriate funds for the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan. Uh, I'm going to read the department, uh, the description of that, and then the category and the total amount for each one. So first department is school. Uh, pet van vehicles, $75,000. Math curriculum, $95,958.7. 400, uh, student Chromebooks under technology, $100,000. Kate, administration laptop warranty extension technology, $55,000. Interactive touch view displays for the Franklin High School, technology, $224,800. Large format 88-inch interactive touch view displays, under technology, $10,000. Crash trial AV system update for equipment, $100,000. Replace seven video service at the high school equipment, $120,000. Uh, removal of Kennedy, uh, modulators at the, uh, under buildings, $50,000. Uh, four large projectors at Franklin High School for under equipment, $120,000. For the school department, that's a total of $950,387. Uh, for facilities, uh, 911 upgrade phone systems under equipment for $300,000. Under technology for fire department laptops, under technology, $36,000. For town administration, school and town website upgrades, under technology, $75,000. And crisis intervention team, CIT Human Services, $25,000. For total of $100,000 for town administration. Under fire, structural firefighters clothing, clothing, under equipment, $82,000. Portable radios, under equipment, $34,607. Battalion chief, uh, command vehicle, the under vehicles, $86,849. Durable medical equipment, under equipment, for 101,631. Hose nozzle associated equipment, under equipment, $32,667. For total for fire, $337,854. Uh, police, police vehicles replacement, under vehicles, $333,595. Electronic control, uh, weapons tasers, under equipment, $14,603. Protected body armor, under equipment, $15,651. Under technology investments, under technology, $9,526. For total for police of $373,375. Public works vehicle equipment, under equipment, $470,000. Uh, total free cash appropriation of $2,567,616. For. Enter, Water Enterprise, uh, Fisher Street Water Treatment Plant Design, Phase Two, Infrastructure, $663,450. Media replacements for equipment, $50,000. Uh, Vale Street Water Main Replacement, $250,000 on the infrastructure. Water Main Projects also under infrastructure, $879,000. General infrastructure improvements, $100,000. For total water retained earnings appropriation of $1,942,450. Now, for Sewer Enterprise, replace control systems at Seven Lift Station, Part One Equipment, $250,000. Phase One SCADA upgrades, under equipment, $100,000. For total of sewer retained earnings appropriations of $350,000. Uh, motion being moved and voted by the town council that the sum of $2,567,616 be appropriated from free cash and $1,942,450 be appropriated from the water, uh, retained earnings, and $350,000 be appropriated from the sewer retained earnings to be expended at the discretion of the town administrator for the fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan, as outlined above, including any residual funds remaining in these line, in these line items. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 24 dash 03.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I think Glenn just read it all out.
Thank you.
Pretty straightforward.
He sure did.
Yep.
Counselor Plegrey as Chair of the Capitol Committee?
Yeah, I think, um, through you, I thank you for, um, reading all of that. That was good. Um, I think our meeting went very well for the Capitol, and there were just a couple of things that we had questions about. Um, but the vote on each of these were four to zero. I think there was one that we, we had a little bit of a concern with, but, um, no, everything else was fine. We thank all of the department heads and them for coming to the meeting and explaining everything that we, we needed to have done. I think we did well with the schools with some money here and wanted people to know that. And, um, that's it. We had a good meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Plegrey. Uh, other questions, uh, Counselor Delacore?
Uh, I would just like to, to, uh, thank the rest of the committee for, it was a long, it was a hard fought, uh, Capitol meeting. I want to, I want to, um, thank all the department heads for their cuts and really buckling down this year, and I, they did the best they could. I know we need a lot more, but I, I want to thank you guys for doing what they did, so.
Thank you, Counselor Delacore. Counselor Chandler?
Just quickly, I'll, I'll echo the same, and especially to the school department, because you took the biggest haircut in this one. And, um, there was a two-hour meeting, and please, you'll get all kinds of information. It's on, um, Franklin Matters. It was a long meeting, but it was, it was a really good meeting. We got a lot done. So, thank you, um, Chair, Chairwoman Plegrey.
Okay, Counselor Cormier Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will agree with my fellow counselors on this committee that it was a good meeting. There was a lot of discussion, there was a lot presented. Um, I even got accused of living in a utopia society. You know, by our illustrious town administrator. I would, I would just like, I would just like to, uh, comment, Mr. Chairman, that perhaps, not at this time, but perhaps going forward, we could revisit the title of the improvement plan. Because it, it came up a lot, it's come up at other meetings, that this, it really isn't a capital improvement plan. We're really just spending free cash on a variety of needs. The notion of capital sort of speaks to one time, special projects. We've gotten away from that, and that's okay. But I think for the interest of transparency, we should think about calling it something different.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier Ledger. Counselor Jones?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I know, having done this many times, that, uh, this is a, this certainly doesn't meet all of the needs, let alone the wishes that many of these departments have. Um, and, and I know going forward, I just, please just continue to bring these things forward, so we can listen to them and address them. And hopefully, as, hopefully as things start to improve, uh, we'll have the means to meet those needs. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Any other counselors? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 24 dash 03. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Resolution 24 dash 04. Free cash, uh, free cash to stabilization accounts transfers. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 24 dash 04. Appropriation for free cash to stabilization accounts transfers. Total amount requested, $203,000. Purpose?
Sheenby.
I've been up since four. Purpose to continued funding of stabilization funds per town, uh, policy. The transfer, the purpose, the source and the amount, fire truck stabilization. Seven-year plan, free cash, $100,000. Field stabilization, replace around, around 2027. Uh, free cash amount, $150,000. Total free cash appropriation, $250,000. Uh, motion being moved and voted by the town council that the sum of $250,000 be transferred from free cash to the fire truck and field stabilizations accounts and for the purposes stated in the outline above. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Um, where are we? Move Resolution 24 dash 04.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
I'll say.
Discussion from the council. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 24 dash 04. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Resolution 24 dash 08. Town Council's support of pending state legislation entitled the Municipal Empowerment Act. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 24 dash 08. Town Council's support for pending state legislation entitled the Municipal Empowerment Act. Whereas on January 22nd, 2024, Governor Mara Healy filed a bill entitled the Municipal Empowerment Act, and whereas the members of the Franklin Town Council have examined the proposed legislation and believe the provisions of the act be in the public's best, in, in the public interest and to support and approve the Town of Franklin's government operations. Now, therefore be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Franklin hereby adopts this resolution evidencing its support for the Municipal Empowerment Act and directs the town administrator to prepare and transmit a letter, together with a copy of this resolution to the Massachusetts State Legislature, and Governor Mara Healy communicating the Franklin Town Council's support for this pending legislation. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution, Resolution 24 dash 08.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Three, Mr. Chairman.
Through Mr. Chairman. So, uh, as everybody knows, Governor Healy filed this bill. Um, and, um, we're hoping that it goes through this year. Um, there's like a hundred provisions in here. I put the section by section. You know, not every provision relates to Franklin. Some things deal with the Cape or other parts of the state, but like Governor Baker did. He filed two pieces of legislation that he got through with all sorts of efficiencies and other ideas in there to try to help streamline local government. Both of those pieces of legislation went through under Governor Baker. Governor Healy went out and did a dozen, um, uh, listing tour sites across the whole state. The provisions that people brought forward are in this bill. In our view professionally, there's about a dozen, two dozen provisions in here. We've labeled some of them out um, in the memo that benefit the Town of Franklin. Yes, the funny one is that you never will have to vote for peg funding again, like on the agenda here tonight. I'm guessing, I'm guessing, I'm guessing the local meals tax option won't get as much of an applause. But, um, in all seriousness, those two issues too, you guys all know Jeff was hot on the meals tax and the hotel tax. We have the World Cup coming in two years. It's not far away. If the legislature doesn't pass this by this July thirty-first, then the governor has to file it another year from now and go through another hearing cycle. And there is, when you start thinking about that, right, you start realizing, they may never do something on this. So, this is just in, this is just a basic advocacy letter. Amy did a great job writing it up. It's one page to get everybody to sign it, to encourage Jeff, uh, Roy and Senator Roush to just put a little extra movement on it. Um, you know, and hopefully they can vote on this by the end of the July. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here regarding double polls. There's a senior citizen tax provision in here that's a local option. We're going to be talking a lot over the next ninety days about the affordability of Franklin. Um, you know, the hotel tax alone, the fourth hotel is probably going to be, uh, given occupancy up behind Hampton Inn within the next month. That hotel will come online. All of these little dinks and dunks help, help solve the big budget thing that's coming up soon. Um, but there are a lot of administrative provisions in here. I know this is very rare for the council to weigh in uh, on legislative matters. We're still working with them, um, to try to get them to come to a meeting, uh, in June like they normally do every year, but, um, given the fact the legislative session ends July thirty-first, uh, Amy and I thought it might be advantageous to, uh, just send a short letter with our support. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions from the council? Counselor Chandler?
Last one of the night, Mr. Chairman. To your polls first, uh, we can find them a thousand dollars apiece, by the way. We should probably send someone around looking for those.
I mean, double polls are a huge problem in every municipality and it allows the local authority to find, find the, um, utility companies a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I saw that.
And more if they don't get rid of the double poll.
That was good.
That's twenty-five years, I think, thirty years, right legislatively, Amy? Like a long time waiting for somebody to do this.
And this one's just a statement. This one's kind of sneaky. It says, "This includes a new motor vehicle X-size surcharge local option."
Right.
So I hope we never do that. So, thank you for listening, man.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, um, thank you, Amy and Jamie, whoever put this together. Um, I was at the Massachusetts Municipal Association meeting when, um, Governor Healy announced this. And you would not believe how many people got up and cheered about the double poll. Like every municipality around the, around the state is bothers. You know, I work for another municipality. I talk a lot to other people who, who are counselors and the mayor and, and in different committees that I'm on. And I think this is really important. It sets a precedent so I can tell them, look, you need to do this too. You need to take this stuff that Franklin's taken to get your representatives to force somebody to do something. Right? And so I want to thank you for doing this and, um, I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, really quick, to you, Mr. Chairman, to Jamie and Amy and the staff, thank you for, for drafting this up. I, you're right, Jamie, it is kind of far and few between that we have letters like this specifically addressed from the council to legislature, to the state for things that we are, we are certainly in favor of. I do think this is something I wish we did more often, you know, for things that we, that, that the state's doing just to kind of express our interest so that they understand that we really need the help. And if, if this is what, if this is another step or tool that we have to do it, then we, we need to take similar actions like this in the future. Thank you, Gadd.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Any other counselors? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution Twenty-four dash zero eight. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Twenty-four dash zero nine. Revised twenty-twenty-four Town Council Meeting Schedule. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution Twenty-four dash zero nine. Uh, revised schedule for Town Council Meetings. Uh, these are the twenty-twenty-four dates. The only thing that's changed is April tenth. Uh, that has replaced April third. So this resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Uh, move Resolution Twenty-four dash zero nine.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution Twenty-four dash zero nine. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Twenty-four dash ten. Gift acceptance, Veteran Services Department, twenty-nine hundred dollars. Senior Center, two hundred dollars. Police Department, fifty dollars. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution Twenty-four dash ten. Acceptance of gifts, Veteran Services Department, Senior Center, Police Department, whereas a Veteran Service Department, Senior Center, Police Department have received generous, generous donations in the amount of three thousand one hundred fifty dollars to be used at the discretion of each department as follows. Donation summary, Veteran Services Department, twenty-nine hundred dollars. Um, Municipal Veterans Assistance Fund, one thousand nine hundred. Monument Restoration Fund, one thousand dollars. Uh, donations to be applied at the discretion of the Veteran Services Department to the Veterans Monument Restoration Fund and the Municipal Veterans Assistance Fund in support of local veterans and their families. Senior Citizens, two hundred dollars, Senior Center, two hundred dollars. Uh, donations to be applied at the discretion of the Senior Center to provide services and programs to senior citizens in the Franklin community. Uh, Police Departments, fifty dollars. Police gift account donation to be applied at the discretion of the department through the police gift account towards a purchase of safety equipment and any other unmet needs for the officers of the Franklin Police Department. Uh, the list of all donors is included on the, uh, February twenty-eight, twenty-four Town Council Meeting Agenda Packet. Now therefore be resolved at the Town Council, the Town of Franklin, on behalf of the Veteran Services Department, Senior Center and Police Department gratefully accept these generous donations to be used at the discretion of each department for the purposes noted above. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution Twenty-four dash ten.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Other than a big thank you to the, uh, people and companies that continue to, uh, uh, gift our, uh, different veteran services, Senior Center, Police, Fire, Public Safety, uh, we appreciate those gifts. Okay, seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution Twenty-four dash ten. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twenty, Resolution Twenty-four dash eleven. Designation of Special Municipal Employee Under State Ethics Law. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution Twenty-four dash eleven. Designation of special municipal employee under state ethics law. Whereas General Law Chapter two sixty-eight A, the state ethics law, applies to all municipal employees, both elected and appointed, and regardless of whether they are compensated or uncompensated. And whereas the statutory scheme imposes stringent prohibitions on conflicts of interest, both actual and perceived, which make, which makes it difficult to recruit locally-employed professionals and other qualified persons to serve in town government. And where in recognition of this, the statute provides that the governing body may make an express classification of uncompensated volunteers serving on town boards, commissioning and committees as special municipal employees, with the exception of governing bodies itself. And whereas by Resolution zero three zero two dated January eighth of twenty, uh, two thousand and three, the Franklin Town Council made and said that this classification for all eligible town boards, commissions and committees then existing, and by Resolution eleven thirteen dated May fourth, two thousand and eleven, Resolution twelve fifteen dated March seventh of twenty-twelve, and Resolution fourteen forty-nine dated July thirty, two thousand and fourteen, and Resolution eighteen thirty dated June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. It made it said designation for eligible town boards, commissions and committees subsequently created in their, uh, and but there are now additional subsequently created bodies which qualify. Now, therefore be resolved at the Franklin Town Council, acting on behalf of the Town of Franklin, hereby makes an express classification of the members of the following additional town boards, commissions and committees as special town employees, under the terms and provisions of General Law Chapter two sixty-eight A, as provided in Section One, Paragraph N of said statutes. Police Station Building Committee, Master Plan Update Committee, Davis Air Building Reuse Advisory Committee. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution Twenty-four dash eleven.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
Uh, just through you really quickly, this is actually a house cleaning item. That's why it only addresses the three committees that are on there. Every resolution, if the, if the council ever sets up another committee, they'll have standard language in it that declares everybody a special municipal employee at that time. So, um, you know, I know the town attorney spent a great deal of time on a phenomenal and thorough memo. Um, but ultimately, if you read the resolution, there's only a few committees there that we had to make sure were designated special municipal employees.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions from the council? Counselor Plegory?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Gatcha, that's not an advisory board. That's one person that's on the board.
It's a, yeah, but the whole board is.
Gatcha's not listed.
Go ahead.
Attorney Sorrell?
Yeah, the other thing which I wanted to emphasize to you anyway, because you all serve on a number of these as well. Council members are expressly, as, as the governing body, prohibited from being special municipal employees. So this will not give you any added protection and that's why we didn't even bother with subcommittees of the council.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution Twenty-four dash eleven. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One of my favorites.
Yeah.
Resolution Twenty-four dash twelve. Cable funds in support of pegged service and programming per Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three F and three quarters. Clerk will read the resolution.
Motion to waive the reading?
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move Resolution Twenty-four dash twelve.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve, uh, Resolution Twenty-four dash twelve. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We missed one last month. Resolution Twenty-four dash thirteen. Cable funds in support of pegged service and programming per Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three F and three quarters. Clerk will read the resolution.
Motion to waive the reading, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move Resolution Twenty-four dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion and second to move, uh, resume, to approve Resolution Twenty-four dash thirteen. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Town Administrators report.
Uh, really quickly, Mr. Chairman, you already, uh, brought it up, but March sixth will be a, a huge day for the Town of Franklin. Uh, we're starting off that day. You already mentioned it, but just another plug after the veterans donations. Um, our, our, our second visit from the Healy administration, um, really first public visit from the Healy administration will be on March sixth. We're very happy through Representative Roy was able to get Secretary, uh, John Santiago, the Secretary of Veterans Affairs, um, he's going to come out and, um, actually have coffee with the vets. So just so folks know, there's no big speaking program. There's no big Q and A. The idea here is, is the secretary is going to come out and just do a few little opening, uh, remarks. And then, uh, we're going to ask him to sit down, um, at every table and just talk to veterans, have a couple cups of coffee, uh, maybe three or four, who knows, and just get to know people, hear their concerns. Um, really quickly, I, I, sometimes I still don't understand how this happens in our country. Um, but I see the Milford DAV donated really generous fifteen hundred dollars to our Municipal Veterans Fund to bring veterans to medical appointments. I mean, there's countless examples of this, right? I don't understand how the federal government doesn't pay for somebody to get a medical appointment when they're a veteran. It just drives me bananas, um, that people have to donate money to do this stuff. But those are the types of issues that we're going to talk about with Secretary Santiago. So if anyone out there is a vet or a, a widow, a spouse of a vet or a family member or knows someone that's deceased in their family or a child or a friend or a neighbor, you know, this meeting is for our veterans and their families to come out and talk to him directly over coffee and Jeff and Becca about the issues that we're seeing here in Franklin and where their perspectives are. It's a really, really important meeting and I hope a lot of folks, um, out there, that are veterans, take advantage of this opportunity. Amy and I happen to know Secretary Santiago both very, very well. Um, he's an incredibly kind and personable and understanding person. Um, and I really, uh, am looking forward to that day, so folks have some time. And then second, you already mentioned, um, I'm going to throw out a quick teaser, um, just for shock value. Um, but the town is going to publish, uh, I'll publish the preliminary budget model, um, this Friday um, in the packet for the Joint Budget Subcommittee Meeting next week, uh, March sixth. Um, and the town is looking at, right now, we will close some of this. Uh, but the town is looking at about a ten point one million dollar budget deficit, uh, for FY twenty-five. Um, so just in case people didn't think it was an important meeting, um, it'll probably be one of the most important meetings we have all year. Um, and then it'll set off about a ninety-day, uh, run, uh, with our, uh, budget system and budget process. Um, and both the superintendent and I are working on a joint PowerPoint presentation together. Um, and so we're going to go present the numbers and, uh, all the situations that we're both in. And, um, I hope people tune in. I do want to make a quick plug for everybody out there that just wants to watch and listen in. Um, just for the amount of seats we have in, in this, in the council chamber and, um, and on Zoom, you can watch on TV, you can watch via YouTube, you can watch on Zoom, and you can come in person. There's a variety of different areas, but if you're just looking to pay attention, um, you know, we are encouraging people to watch on TV or to check in on YouTube, um, to listen in. So, hopefully, uh, folks will tune in throughout the community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, next item on the agenda, Subcommittee and Ad-Hoc Committee Reports. Uh, first one this evening is, uh, Town Administrator Evaluation, Ad-Hoc Subcommittee. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, we had a very productive, um, evaluation meeting with the TA the other day. Counselor Deloco was there, Counselor Sheridan. They asked some great questions, so my job was very easy. I appreciate that, both of you. Um, the bottom line is, we were very happy with everything that Jamie was doing. Obviously, the goals are just boom, boom, boom. We're ready to work on all the new ones. Um, and what we're going to do is, we're just going to move the whole evaluation right to Human Resources. That was, uh, that was what the meeting came up with, so. Nothing else?
Any, any questions or comments, uh, Counselor Chandler? Okay, uh, basically what we've done with this in the past is we've taken a vote to put the written summary in his personnel file.
Right, yes.
So I would entertain a motion, Counselor, maybe from Counselor Chandler, to put the written summary in his personnel file?
I'll make a motion to put the written summary into, um, the Town Administrator's Human Resource File.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capitol Budget Subcommittee, Counselor Plegory, who we've been through it quite a bit.
We've already been through it, no, so I think we're all set. It was a good meeting.
Uh, EDC, Counselor Hamblin? Uh, EDC, Counselor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting, I'm not sure if I had a chance to talk about it yet, but we had a meeting where we started to set our goals for the year, prioritize items, and I think I already spoke about it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, okay. See?
I think it was the same day.
Yeah, so we haven't had another meeting. I think we'll probably have one in March.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Budget Subcommittee, we have a big one next week. Master Plan Committee.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really briefly, the full Master Plan Committee has a meeting next Wednesday, March 6th, but just for the public's, public notification to everyone out there who's, who's fallen asleep by now at this time of night, we're having a very large, open, public event on March 23rd from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM over at Dean College. And there's going to be a lot more publicity about that coming out shortly, and we invite the whole public and everyone, anyone, invite their friends, family members, neighbors to come and give us their input on various content, subjects, viewers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Davis Dare Reuse, you haven't met?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Police Station, we have not met. Gatcher Advisory Board, they were supposed to meet. Counselor Frangello did text me and say that they were supposed to have met last week. They did not, but he did meet with the administration last week to discuss increased services for Franklin, and he will update us more as he moves forward.
Good luck with that.
I heard he's not Mr. Gatcher anymore.
Huh?
Is he not President of Gatcher anymore? That's a...
Future agenda items, Counselor Cormier Ledger.
Uh, nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Chandler.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Peligree.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Sheridan.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Hamblin.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Jones.
No, sir.
Counselor DeLoco. Counselor Comments, Counselor Sheridan.
Yeah, I think they're all probably in bed now, but I'm going to thank all the residents for coming. It was very well researched, it wasn't just, uh, not in my backyard, it was very well, very well researched.
Without question. Thank you, Counselor Sheridan. Counselor Hamblin.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let people know that this Saturday at the library, from 9:30 to 12:00 o'clock, there's going to be, not one, but two of the subcommittees of the Master Plan Update Committee will be there, the Sustainability and the Land Use and Zoning subgroup. So if people wanted to go talk to them about what they want to see happen in zoning, you should come to the library tomorrow, on Saturday, Ian. So one of the...
Perfect.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Cormier Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I too want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and for their comments. Also want to thank our DPW staff for responding so quickly to the water main break that affected a very large number of people in Franklin. For the first time in years, we're seeing positive comments on Facebook pages about, about what the town and the responsiveness to that crisis, so I thought that was great. This Saturday night, for anybody that doesn't know, Safe Coalition's doing a special event, not just to bring attention to their programs, but it's probably going to entail some fundraising as well, but it's going to involve a lot of musicians, and it's at six o'clock. And Jeff Roy, our state rep, is performing, as well as Chad Hollister, who's pretty famous, opened for a lot of really big acts. And I'm proud to say that my son, Jaden, is performing in the program with a two-minute trombone solo. Can't promise that it's going to be the, an epic night for everybody that appreciates music, but it's certainly a big deal to him. So if you have the availability to come out Saturday night for a couple of hours, I know that that group would appreciate it, so thank you.
Where is it?
Um, right at the Safe Coalition Headquarters in Franklin. Six o'clock, it's probably going to wrap up around nine.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier Ledger.
Sure.
Counselor Chandler.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of reiterating tonight, again, March, March 6th, March Madness.
March Madness.
We're ready to kick it off. I'm excited for everyone to be involved and see these numbers. Secondly, thank you to those residents. Hopefully Jamie has their email and they all know the next steps, the process, how it goes back. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Peligree.
Okay, I would just like to make mention of two deaths that occurred these past couple of weeks. Bob Catalano, who was one of our town counselors and involved with an awful lot here in town, sad to say goodbye to him. And Mona Garangelli, she was one of my clerks downstairs when I was town clerk, and she passed away. And then on an up note, I'd like to just mention that Franklin's birthday is March 2nd. Let's not forget it. Just talk about Dr. Seuss. That angers me like you can't believe, the schools all talk about Dr. Seuss. They don't even mention the Town of Franklin.
They don't talk about Dr. Seuss anymore.
What?
They don't talk about Dr. Seuss.
No, they don't.
Why?
Oh, let's not get into that.
We can go over that with you.
Well, no, 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 fine, don't talk about him in the school. Let's talk Franklin, the town of Franklin, okay? And how old are we people?
How old are we? Old.
Two-hundred-and-forty-six?
Six.
Four years.
Yeah, we need to start a committee for us.
Almost as old as our step.
Almost of having two-hundred-and-fifty, and so we'll be planning that pretty soon.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, are we having a committee for that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peligree. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I hope we set up a committee for that, that would be exciting.
We will do that.
To set that up.
Debbie runs that.
Um, nothing other than it's sad to hear that Tim Wakefield's wife died today. I know that was a, that was a big loss to, you know, many charitable organizations that rely on their support. But I also want to thank everyone that came out tonight. It was a very, very hearty discussion on a very difficult topic, and I know, I know, like Patrick said, everyone's probably asleep. But other than that, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor DeLoco.
Not at this time, everybody said what I need to say, so.
Okay, and I'll just close with, again, it's nice when we have a packed audience that, uh, in council chambers to at least see what's going on and participate in what is going on. And I know, uh, we certainly understand the concerns and hear the concerns of our residents. It certainly does not fall on deaf ears, but we love to have you come before us and give us your opinions. It's how we, it's how we learn and how we make our informed decisions. So thank you all for being here this evening. And with that...
And thank you to the Girl Scouts for...
And thank you to the Brownies.
Thank you for the Brownies.
The Brownies.
The Brownies.
They're for sure in bed.
All right.
Absolutely.
It was only six, four hours ago.
Okay, uh, we do have a need this evening to, for an executive session considering the purchase and exchange lease or value of real property, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body I so declare, and we will not return to open session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session for considering